I'd like to call to order the King George County School Board Regular Meeting, September 28th, 2020. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
May be seated. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make, I guess, a motion to move the information items ahead of public and employee comment.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Information items is now moved to the first or the next item on our agenda. Dr. Benson? I'm sorry, committee reports. Yeah. Okay. Do we have any committee reports, actually?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Hawk?
I am eager to report from the Chesapeake Bay Governor's School Advisory Committee that they are alive and well. They're still virtual, but the kids are excited. They're doing well. They're hoping for more hands-on experience, especially being the Chesapeake Bay Governor's School. But they're ready to hang in there, and the staff is doing well. And so we're looking forward to an interesting year down there.
That's great. Anybody else?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Awesome.
It's an opportunity to attend the Commonwealth Governor's School meeting, and they two are waiting for the divisions to make their decision on how they're going to go forward. They're working on a diversity plan for students and staff. That's all I have to report on.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to Dr. Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Is this... Can you hear me okay? Appreciate the opportunity to come back to you. We, this board gathered in July and August, and at that time made a decision to begin the school year as a 100% remote instruction, with that 100% remote instruction mode delivery. The, another aspect of that decision was to revisit the opportunity for if we have an opportunity to return to school in some manner, as far as face-to-face instruction in the middle of October. So October is quickly approaching. I appreciate the board's willingness to allow me to update you with some health metrics. We issued a staff and a family questionnaire. I have some information, the results of those surveys, to share with you this evening. I've drawn some inferences that I'll share with you. I want to review some transportation capacity information because that is a key variable to consider when looking at a return to school. And then I do have three options, certainly not meant to limit any other options you want to consider, but three options that I'm putting forward for your consideration in the near term. Happy to entertain any discussion you have in the long term. And then finally, should the board consider allowing some students to come back to school, then I've got some operational expectations to share with you and our community this evening in response to questions and some of the feedback. So before I begin, I do want to thank many, many people who have answered the call. We have changed the complete paradigm in terms of instructional delivery. Everything was turned upside down. No doubt, we had some bumps as we opened school in terms of our virtual platform, but we continued to persevere. Many teachers, many leaders in our school division have worked tirelessly to improve our virtual delivery from March to today. And I'm very proud of them. I'm proud of the fact that everybody has stepped up. Everybody has done what it takes to continue instruction for our kids. The concluding slide, I'll share that, my first bullet early, and that is that I hope everybody understands that we all want a return of our students every day in school. We all understand that is the very best model, and we yearn for that. We are all continuing to grieve for what we right now do not have and what we once had. So the spirit of this is to try to eliminate, again, using data, using some inferences we can draw from the commentary, and I appreciate everybody's participation in our surveys and the commentary you took time to write, not just answer the questions, but the comments, the emails. I appreciate, and have read carefully, and the board members have as well. I think they're all symptomatic of a very caring, passionate community about education in our children, and that is a very healthy sign, no matter which side of this or which perspective you are choosing to champion. So please know that upfront. John, if you'd be kind enough to go ahead and advance for me. One more, please. Go ahead, John. One more, please. Keep going. One more. There we are. Okay, so first, as far as health metrics, I want to make sure everybody understands we are part of the Rappahannock Health District. That is a division of the Virginia Department of Health. Our health district includes Stafford, Pennsylvania, Caroline, and King George Counties, as well as the city of Fredericksburg. In the health metrics, I think it was brought up at a public comment earlier, at one of our meetings earlier, that we do need to consider not just King George data, but we need to consider our district data because many of our employees, in fact, about half of our employees reside outside of King George County. So that's why I've chosen to include both King George local data as well as our district data. Next slide, John. So this is a, directly from our district data, our district office. This is data, and you'll see the counties I just mentioned and the city of Fredericksburg up at the top. This is called a situation report, and to this point, weekly, I've received this report from our local health department. It is meant to then show, kind of give a snapshot of our district, what is going on, what the trends are, what the numbers are telling us. This is just one piece of data, and I'll go through this. You'll see our county is right in the middle there, the column in the middle. So you can see King George, and then at the very end to the right, you can see the total in the Rappahannock area health district. So as you can see, there's some good news here, and that, King George, we have a .3 seven-day average of new daily cases. Now, this is from 9/16 to 9/23. Again, I receive this weekly. I'm going to share with you on the next slide a dashboard that just today was opened up that includes tabs that the public can use to access health data, local and regional health data, and contrast it to CDC recommendations. So it is a helpful tool just released today, and I'll share that link here in a second. Good news is that the seven-day average of daily new cases, both in King George and in our health district through the 23rd, was declining. You can see some of the localities there that did have increases. But again, overall, in our district, that rate has been on the decline. Next slide. This is the link, and the presentation will be up on our website for you, but this is a link that you can go to. And again, one of the tabs in this, when you get there, you'll see that one of the tabs provides the CDC recommendations. And the CDC has similar metrics, but they kind of, they use a color coding system to indicate thresholds from lowest risk up to the highest level of risk. So for King George County, happy to say that our total number of new cases per 100,000 persons within the last 14 days, that includes yesterday, is at 18.81. That is in the lower risk. And again, up on top, you'll see the scale going from lowest to highest. So we're down to the left on the lower-risk end of that scale in terms of new cases per 100,000 persons in the last 14 days. The percentage of positivity during the last 14 days, the good news is that's 1.6 for King George County, which is at the lowest risk level. Next slide, John. So health data, the only other thing I'll add is that we do, as a region, now, we need to understand that our region extends, northwest region extends all the way to Harrisonburg, includes JMU. So it's a relatively large region, but region data does suggest that we have a moderate, and we have fluctuating spread in terms of the virus. So that's, those are just a snapshot of some of the health metrics, and again, I've provided a link there for you so that each day you can visit that dashboard that BDH has put out. I think it's going to be very helpful moving forward. Okay, this table represents a summary of the family survey responses. Again, we appreciate everyone participating. We had a very high response rate. I would estimate probably 80-85% response rate on the survey, so appreciate everybody turning that around. This table basically summarizes the total number of responses by school, in the case of elementaries. Of course, we just have the one middle and one high school. And then it breaks them out in terms of the virtual, those that preferred to remain with a virtual platform for instruction for their student, and those who would prefer a blended option, as the blended option has been presented. So I include this data, the, generally, our school division, that we get a response rate of about 60% who preferred the blended, as presented, or 40% who prefer the virtual, with the exception of a few grade levels. We have, I think it was sixth grade, you'll see there, that division, the division total for sixth grade broke out to 49% preferring virtual and 51% preferring the blended. Conversely, then, up in kindergarten, you'll see that 66% preferred the blended and 34% preferred the virtual. So that's the breakout in terms of how those surveys came in. Again, generally, a 60%, 40% breakdown, blended to virtual respectively. Next slide, John. We also issued a staff survey with a few questions. So these are the results from the staff survey. The first question was, should we return to school for the second nine weeks? How comfortable will you be with in-person interaction with staff and students? You'll see there, I've put the number of responses and placed it in histogram for your, by which you infer. 38 of our licensed staff, I broke it out by licensed staff and paraprofessionals, and then those in other employee groups, but 38% or 38 persons indicated they'd be comfortable with no concerns. 73 of our licensed staff said they'd be comfortable with minimal concerns. 121 were somewhat comfortable, but then 126 were not at all comfortable. Generally, although it didn't hold true with the final two indicators I mentioned, generally, our other staff responded in a similar pattern. Next slide, John. Next question was, how favorable do you believe a full virtual model of instruction is for students? And again, our licensed staff and paraprofessional responses, 100 indicated it was favorable. 191 believed it was somewhat favorable, but 59 believed it not at all favorable. Next slide. Next question was, how favorable do you believe a blended model of instruction is for students? And the blended learning model designed for students to be in school for instruction two days a week. The other three days are asynchronous instruction completed by students at home. Our licensed staff responded that, in this case, 49 persons believed this model favorable. 133 believed it somewhat favorable, but 176 believed it not at all favorable. Next slide, please. So some inferences, and I drew these not only from the numbers that I've shared with you from both surveys, but there was a good bit of commentary. And I will tell you, all the commentary was forwarded to the school board members. I appreciate greatly people taking the time, because you didn't have to, but taking the time to expand on your quantifiable answers with some qualitative data for us to consider. So these were some of the inferences I took away to share. First, our school division families are generally divided, again, with a 60% response rate preferring a face-to-face or blended instructional model, as it was presented in the survey, and 40% preferring to remain virtual. Our staff, particularly our licensed staff and paraprofessionals, believe the virtual model is more favorable for students than the blended model that was presented. The third thing is that approximately 2/3 of our licensed staff and paraprofessionals are either somewhat comfortable or not at all comfortable with the prospect of interacting face-to-face with students and other staff. Our families with students in kindergarten and first grade prefer the blended model presented at a higher rate than the other grade levels or grade bands. That many staff and family responses noted concern about disruptions that might be caused by a transition to blended from virtual delivery. Specifically, and again, in the model that was presented for blended, concerns were, fell around a theme, first one being, or a couple of themes, first being that the reduction of direct instructional time with a teacher would be in effect, and again, from four days of online instruction to just two days of in-person, again, that associated with the blended design presented in the survey. There was also concern about teacher changes in order to balance class sizes once we had transitioned to a hybrid model. So those two comments were prevalent throughout a lot of the commentary in the survey responses. Next slide, John. I also want to talk about transportation, because this is a variable that oftentimes we make assumptions that we can simply transport students. But right now, these are some metrics associated with our fleet. And keep in mind that we have thus far committed to seating students, one student per seat, unless they are from the same household, and the seating diagram shared showed students stagger from inside to outside, from inside to outside, to try to maintain as much social distancing as we could with a mask while seated on a school bus. So I will say that the total buses that we have in our fleet is 67. Of those 67 buses, 16 are dedicated for special needs transportation. All but five of those currently are being used to transport students who have special needs at this time. 14 of those buses are what we call sub-buses. Those are buses that we can call upon to substitute should we need to. But right now, at this time, we have no sub-drivers. We are always looking for good bus drivers. We do have three potential new drivers. They are completing their licensure. Our fingers are crossed for them. We also have four drivers who are permanent, who are not available during the pandemic due to accommodations that are being provided per federal regulation related to COVID. So that really means that we have 33 generally use school buses with drivers that are available for us to use. Those 33 buses can be used to complete two runs in the morning and two runs in the afternoon. We do have a limit to the number of hours that any bus driver can drive during any given day, and that's through VDOT. So that's, that is our capacity in terms of transportation. The table above gives you an idea of the number of buses that it would be, that would be needed. If we were to look at just kindergarten through second grade, the buses needed to transport those students only per school and then as a total. So you can see, if we looked at our response rate for these two, for these three grade levels, if we estimated that right now 60% would want to come back, between 60 and 65, remember that data that's in the table, would want to come back in a face-to-face model, we would need to dedicate 26 buses to a morning run and an afternoon run. If you move to the left, and let's say that we had 70%, when all was settled and done, we had 70%, we would need 30.4 buses, 31 buses, to transport those three grade levels. So you can see the math that associated with transportation and our school bus fleet in and of itself is an important variable to keep in mind, because it does, as long as we are committed to just one student per seat, it does come into play in terms of how we expand face-to-face instruction potentially. Thank you. Next slide, John. So with this data, I do, and I promised upfront, I would share with you three possible options. Option one is that, is the same option that was considered back in July and August, and that would be that all students would be returned to school for in-person instruction two days per week. Asynchronous activity would be provided then for students to complete three days per week. So this is the blended model. Some key considerations with this model, that this does provide all students the opportunity to return to school in person, albeit for only two days per week. The survey data from staff, particularly the licensed staff, expressed concern that this was not a favorable option for students. It is potentially disruptive, given the likelihood of teacher changes that we would need to make to staff such a model. And this option would prompt a reduction of direct teacher interaction with students from four days to two days a week. Commentary from many families is that Wednesdays, in our current model, our full virtual model, are very difficult. This option in effect would create three "Wednesdays" per week for students. Two groups receiving instruction at two different times will slow the pace of curriculum coverage in some cases by half. This option really makes little sense when you adjudicate it from the academic point of view. Next slide, John. Option two would be simply to maintain our current delivery model for all students, 100% virtual, until a later date. Some key considerations here is that this does not provide any students the opportunity to return to school in person, particularly our youngest and most vulnerable learners. Survey data from families suggests a majority of families, 60%, would prefer the opportunity for their students to receive in-person instruction. And the virtual delivery model is providing every student with the opportunity to access their teachers four days per week. Next slide, John. The third option I'd present for your consideration is that for students in grades K through second grade, we allow those who choose to return to school four days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, for a half-day of instruction with the same teacher they have currently assigned to them in the virtual setting. Others who choose may remain 100% virtual. The K2 students will continue to receive virtual instruction in the afternoon, though, instead of the morning, with their same teacher. I do want to make a quick note, because I know that publicly I'm saying the same teacher. The only exception would be very limited, and that would be if we have a teacher who has been excused from face-to-face due to a documented medical factor, because they are at increased risk for contracting COVID, or the effects of contracting COVID. Some key considerations with this model. It seems apparent that students in grades kindergarten and first grade struggle more with the virtual platform, since a relatively higher percentage of families indicated a want for the blended model on the family survey. I will say there was commentary as well that ran along that same line of, that same inference. The second one is that while teachers are doing their very best, the virtual platform is a more difficult delivery model to implement with our youngest learners. As proposed, this option would still allow for four days of direct interaction with teachers, and it maintains a virtual option for families who prefer that platform. I think an important factor to consider is this, is that while every effort will be made to socially distance students, it cannot be guaranteed that every classroom will be able to accommodate at minimum three feet of social distancing at all times. So that is one factor that we need to consider, is that the reality is, right now, we have a, let's say, we have a little more than 60% of families indicating that they would take the in-person option. Of course, that survey was completed with the context that there will be two days of instruction per week. With the context changing before, we could very likely see other families want to change their designation from virtual to the in-person. So I put that last bullet in there to make sure that we were clear that should, we would not cut it off and say that, well, you responded this way on the survey, so you can't come into school until we have an open seat, so to speak. That's just not ethically, I just don't believe that's an ethical thing to do. If a student chooses and needs to come into school face-to-face, we will allow that student to come in. But there is a give and take. There is something we have to consider, and that is, we simply may not be able to socially distance, certainly at six feet. As you know, World Health and the American Pediatrics Association recommend it, three feet with a mask as a mitigating factor. So I just want to make sure that that's up in front and clear with everybody, that if this option were chosen, we would need to accept that as a factor of risk associated with return. Next slide, please, John. Okay, some operational supports that I want to share with everybody. The board indicated a want for some guidelines or plan in terms of how we would set up classrooms, how we would operate, should the board consider allowing our students to return. First, with regard to facilities, classrooms and other spaces throughout the division would be set up, again, to support social distancing to the extent possible, and masks must be worn by all unless excused due to a documented medical condition or during scheduled breaks by the teacher. But in general, masks will be worn by all students as a mitigating factor. And again, that's one of those factors we need to include to keep our risk, according to CDC, keep our risk in the low, low to moderate range. Desks, again, I pulled out from the American Academy of Pediatrics, their language, that desks should be placed at least three feet apart. But I think it's, we all understand that with kindergarten, first, and second graders, they don't necessarily sit at a desk, nor would we want them sitting at a desk for three hours, three and a half hours a day. But their desk would be placed as best we can, at least three feet apart, ideally six feet apart. If desks are spaced less than six feet apart, face covering should be strongly encouraged. And then from the CDC, appropriate and consistent use of masks is most important when students, teachers, and staff are indoors, and when social distancing is difficult to implement or maintain. Again, these are the underpinning elements of the guidance we've received that would, that suggests that masks be mandatory and worn at all times, unless, again, excused by a medical condition or during a scheduled break, where the teacher can ensure students are going to remain socially distant from each other. I mentioned it already, but I want to mention again to reinforce that bus transportation will be maximized, that one student per seat, alternating window and aisle placement. Masks will be required to ride the school buses unless you're excused due to a documented medical condition. Next slide, please, John. Our facilities, set up, again, plexiglass and other barriers will be in place in high-traffic areas to prevent the spread of disease. Example, in high exposure areas such as the front offices, any individual testing locations, our school health rooms. Our ventilation systems have been assessed and set to exceed the Building Code Guidelines for air circulation. That'll promote disease suppression. Stairwells will be designated as up or down to reduce traffic flow. Hallways have those one-foot tiles that'll help students measure distance in supporting six feet of social distancing, should they be in the hallway as a class. Ancillary spaces such as gyms, cafeterias, those will be closed for large group gatherings, unless we need them for instruction with six feet of social distancing in place in those areas. Restrooms will be monitored, with every other stall or urinal sink closed for use. Again, that'll help promote social distancing, and signage will be in place across all division buildings regarding safety procedures and social distancing. Next slide, please. Cleaning. Our classrooms will be cleaned and sanitized nightly. Classrooms will also have cleaner available for teachers and students to be able to clean or sanitize desks in between changes in group structure. Restrooms will be cleaned multiple times per day with disinfectant. Our classrooms and division areas are equipped with disinfectant cleaning supplies that are readily available and regularly filled nightly as needed. High-touch areas such as doorknobs will have antimicrobial, continuously self-cleaning touch points, and counters and sign-in areas will be sanitized on a frequency schedule of no less than four times daily. It is possible that we, and we appreciate the Board of Supervisors' support in terms of CARES Act funding, it is possible, depending on vendor availability, that we could procure plexiglass dividers in those student spaces and classrooms themselves. Again, if it's, if the supplies are available, and if it's age-appropriate for the application according to the teacher. Next slide, please. Student health. Students who attend school must have provided their immunization or physical requirements as outlined by the BDOE/BDH guidelines prior to participating. as outlined by the VDOE/BDH guidelines prior to participating in in-person learning. Students with an identified health issue, placing them in a high-risk group as defined by their healthcare provider and/or the CDC, must have an updated health plan on file prior to attending school in an in-person setting. And then our school health clinics are staffed fully open in the isolation area identified for staff and students who are displaying symptoms. Procedures and resources will be in place to address students and staff that feel ill due to COVID-like illnesses. Next slide, please. Daily health screenings and face coverings, the staff and students above the age of two and/or when is developmentally appropriate, will be required to wear a face covering at all times, unless there is a documented medical or ADA reason for an exemption. Staff and students will be, will complete a daily health screening. Temperatures will be taken upon arrival when in-person learning is provided. Staff and students will monitor, self-monitor their health and follow attendance guidelines established by the school division. Students who are unable to adhere to mitigation requirements with support and reasonable accommodations will be moved to the online and virtual instruction to ensure the health and safety of themselves and others. As far as transportation, again, students will be transported on school buses with social distancing in place where possible. Buses will be sanitized prior to the beginning of the route, and in between the routes, all seats and handrails will be cleaned. Far as visitors, visitation to the school site is discouraged. Visitors will only be allowed in the school buildings for scheduled appointments, and will be asked health screening questions and subject to temperature check by school staff upon entry. Contactless pickup and drop-off procedures will be in place for parents to deliver and retrieve student items without entering the building, will be in place to minimize the disease spread. Next slide, please. Again, washable face coverings will be available for staff or students who do not have them. There'll be a 60-day supply of disposable face coverings for students who may arrive at school without a face covering. Far as personal protective equipment or PPE for staff, a 60-day supply of PPE for all schools will be available, including masks, gloves, gowns, and face shields calculated based upon need and role, which may include full PPE for SHJ, preschool staff, special education staff, behavior specialists, administration, and others as appropriate. Handwashing and sanitizing, hand sanitizer will be provided at all entrances or other critical areas refilled daily as needed, and handwashing will be promoted by our staff. Next slide, please. So some takeaways. Again, I shared with you when I began that we all want what we once had with our students. So no matter what this board decides or deliberates, no matter what I have recommended in the context of our current day situation, please know that all of our teachers, everybody wants all of our kids back in school just as soon as it's safe to do so. There are no easy choices in this situation, and there does not exist a no-risk option for this board to consider. There are only relative levels of risk that need to be assessed and decided upon. And lastly, I do, again, sincerely and gently want to thank everyone. Yes, there have been many, many emails written, there are many different perspectives on where we are and what we should do. All of them are appreciated, all of them have merit, there's no doubt. A decision just must be made in terms of how we pragmatically move forward in a responsible manner. So thank you all through our community for your input, your participation in survey and providing a basis for me to consider, for this board to consider in creating some recommendations. So with that, Madam Chair, I'll conclude, and you happy to answer any questions you may have?
Thank you, Dr. Benson. Let's go ahead and open it up to some questions. Mr. Collins, did you want to?
I'll pass on mine.
Okay. Ms. Hock?
So many questions. And yet, I really, really think that, Dr. Benson, you've been very, very fully inclusive of all the populations and all the concerns. I truly am glad we have a third option to consider, and I trust that the thinking behind the third option is that potentially, if our numbers stay low and everybody does what they're supposed to do, then we could imagine phasing in potential other groups of students down the road. I think that's optimistic, and I try to be very optimistic. I guess I don't have any specific questions, except that there are so many details in, I'm getting around to the question, my apologies. Almost all of our emails from staff and parents have contained very specific questions, very, very good questions. And I guess my question to you is, how did that information get integrated into your presentation?
Well, all the commentary in general was used for the presentation. I would say that if the board elected to allow us to bring kindergarten through second grade, then tomorrow, I'd begin conversations with principals to address. Again, that data is helpful to us to look at and then to move forward. Again, we have two, more than two weeks planned at the target date, should the board decide that the target date is still appropriate. But I'd be working with principals specifically to not only fulfill, you know, I gave you general guidelines, it would be expectations consistent across the division. Each school then would need to develop a plan as to how to meet those expectations on a daily basis with their staff.
I might add a comment, and I guess a partial question, is that I think available on our website, and certainly the basic questionnaire is, there is something called the Phase III COVID Mitigation Health Plans for Public Schools. And what that is, I'm paraphrasing, is that it's what we plan to do to provide the best help that we can for our school system. And we'll have to, we've submitted one in order to start virtual, and we would have to submit another updated one, as you and I talked earlier. And that, I encourage people to look at certainly the form, if nothing else, because it is very inclusive. It's 16 pages and answers a lot of questions that both I had and that many of the folks had who wrote to me. So as I think you indicated, this would be available on the website when it would be completed.
It would simply be amended. It's already been submitted, as every school division needed to do. And we continue to amend as activities, not just school activities, but I'll give you an example, any parks and rec activities that we hosted at the school, we work cooperatively with them to update our state health plan to be inclusive of those types of stuff.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, just next to her. Sorry. So I do, I guess I do have two questions, a couple comments that I'm, I guess will lead me to my questions. So like Ms. Hock mentioned, I'm glad to see that there's another option available. I think as time has progressed, perhaps we have come to realize that the blended option, while it was, it sounded like a good approach a few weeks ago, when all of, when our planning session was a little bit more underway, but it seems like that doesn't seem so sustainable now. So I appreciate that we have a second, or a third, a third option before us. I guess just a couple comments that'll lead me to my ultimate questions. So based on the presentation and a lot of the feedback that we've gotten from teachers and parents, obviously it does suggest that the blended, the blended option isn't terribly favorable. It seems unsustainable for teachers, all of things that Dr. Benson hit on, so I think we're all probably in agreement, and that it doesn't make a lot of sense academically. For the kindergarten through two option, I do like that those, that would allow those who choose to remain virtual to keep their current teachers, I guess with some exceptions as staffing concerns would come into play. I have concerns about our lack of confidence in the ability to main social distancing requirements between students and staff, should that be the option that we go with, which I know you commented on. And then, you know, there are always concerns about children now that who get sent to school sick, pre-COVID, right? And so, you know, with flu season coming up and the winter months, I don't think we could really expect that phenomenon to change appreciably, so I think there's some risk there, just with the consideration that a lot of the symptoms for flu and cold and that sort of thing are going to be similar to COVID, so I think that's something we would need to think about. With regards to the virtual option, I know we've received a lot of feedback from parents who are struggling, especially those with, you know, parents of our youngest students, and I know that challenge is very real. I know my son's six, he's in first grade, we live it every day as well, so I'm completely, I recognize the challenges there. At the same time, we've really gotten a lot of good feedback from teachers on the positives that have come out of virtual, the virtual instruction, that I think, at least for me, have been very unexpected and pleasantly surprising. I know teachers have said that there are actually fewer disruptions, that there are fewer discipline problems, there's, because children aren't interacting with each other, less bullying, children that are too shy or insecure to speak up in front of their peers have actually shown that now they're engaging more with their teachers and able to get a little bit more one-on-one help when necessary. That, you know, attendance in general remains an issue with perhaps the same students that it was an issue with before, but that attendance problems, but overall attendance is better. And so, and something that teachers have, have pointed out, which I, I know I personally took to heart in thinking about how my son has been handling things, they've highlighted that, you know, the frustration that we're seeing in our children, obviously it's very real, but they remind us that when the school year kicks off, those frustrations are seen in the classrooms. And I think that's a valid point for us to remember. And so if we make a change mid, midsemester, or whenever we make the change, really, there's going to be a period of time where students and staff are readjusting to the new, the new paradigm, and there will be some instructional time lost. So obviously, we need to take into consideration the benefits of sending our children back at whatever point that is, with the risks of losing a little bit of instruction time based on making that change. So, so I say all of that, you know, there, there's obviously, as has been stated, no, no easy, no easy answer. I know this weighs heavily, at least on me, I'm sure it does on everyone else. But I guess before we make a decision on the K through two option, I would, I guess I have two questions. Could we, I'm definitely interested in feedback from the kindergarten through second teachers, right, that would be the ones implementing that plan. So I know we, you know, the questionnaire got feedback from staff in general, I would be interested if, I don't know, if we could get feedback specifically from that population of teachers that would be affected in implementing those changes, and then would also be interested to know if we could get a more detailed plan about what this, what the kindergarten, what bringing the K through two back four days a week would really look like. I know that wasn't a part of our plan to date, so there hasn't been, assuming a lot of planning that has gone into that. So I'd be interested in more information about that before we need to make a decision.
So I don't know that I have a ton of questions about, can you hear me? I never know if this thing's working or not, about the presentation, and I was going to save some of those comments for work comment after hearing public comment, and I appreciate most, both Ms. Hawks and Ms. Gonzalez's comments and questions, and I concur with everything that's been said. I guess one of the things I'm somewhat concerned about, and I think the K through two option is probably a good one, for many reasons that have already been outlined, these are, those are our most vulnerable learners, but vulnerable learners. But I'm concerned that bus drivers would be responsible for monitoring mask-wearing of five- and six-year-olds on a bus, and as well as driving and monitoring if those students are staying in their seats, because I think little kids tend to jump around a lot. So it's doable, but what kind of training would be required of bus drivers in order to maintain those safety measures, I guess is a question I have. The other thing I question, and I could be wrong, but from a lot of the feedback we've gotten, and trust me, there's probably not been as much as everybody thinks there has, but there's been plenty. I hope that everyone understands, in the blended model, and this was in the presentation, but, but it's been kind of something that's been hit home to me by parents and people I've talked to, that your students right now are receiving four days of virtual, but which is basically in-person learning with their teachers. If you send them back to school two days a week, they're going to only get two days of that. And on the middle school level, because they've had to split their, because there are six or seven periods, they've had to split that into two days. So for example, your student will see their math teacher once a week. So I'm not sure that, and I think it's, I understand that people want their kids to go back to school, understand that this is all difficult, and there's no easy answers and all of those things, but I just think it needs to be really clear to parents that those Wednesdays, as was pointed out, that are difficult because there's no teacher assistance or interaction, are going to be three times a week instead of one. So just, just, it's not a question, it's just a concern that I have, that everybody understands that your time with your, your students' time with their teacher, which is now four days a week, will be cut to two and possibly one. So just some things to consider in, as we move forward, making a decision. That's not really a question.
Did you, did you want to go, Mr. Collins? Go ahead.
So I was curious why there wasn't a, a five-day option to go back to school, where
Yes, sir. I simply begin where this board left off in terms of the blended model instruction. We could certainly entertain a five-day. With that, you would need to then, obviously, you would not be able to adhere to any social distancing, and buses would be loaded as they were before all of this began. So I just want to make clear that I put three options, but I did preface that by saying that these are not, I certainly don't mean these to be the exclusive options the board can consider. I just gave you three options to begin your discussion in terms of consideration. If the board chooses five-day, so be it.
So we know there are, your last takeaways is there's no, absolutely no option that doesn't consist of risk. And it's the level of risk, and we talked a lot, or the plan talks a lot about mitigation, CDC and American Pediatrics and the dashboard, where the, everything is going down. So I think that we should put, I mean, I've received, I can't even tell you how many emails, hundreds and hundreds, and they work out a little different than 60/40, they work more 70/30. But I also noticed in the instructional plan update that actually, if you take the first three with the staff, it's probably 75%, 25% are comfortable. It's a level, level what comfortable, the harder to come back. And then not comfortable at all is about 25%. Our staff always exceeds expectations, always, and it is difficult. This is, this has been a retool of the educational system. Decisions are not easy. I expect the public comment to be on both sides of the fence, and our job here as a board is to represent the citizens that we are elected to serve, not our personal opinions. That's all the comments I have for writing this.
All right, sometimes I like going last, and sometimes I don't. But, so I, I think that one of the things that, I'm not only hearing from us up here on the board, but also from Dr. Benson, is that there is not a definitive choice. I think that, you know, we as a community are definitely divided in what that level of risk we're willing to take. And I think, you know, I was pleased to see the option three. As far as an appetite goes, it was more of a grape, and I was hoping for a grapefruit, something much larger. I understand that there are challenges in getting a five-day back-to-school face-to-face, and there's a lot of things that we have to plan and work towards and have a better understanding, but I think that we really need to get the kids back in school, and we need to get our lifestyles to a point where it, it used to be. I think that it's, it's challenging for families, especially for single parents, parents that have two family incomes. You know, I hear this all the time, is, school is not a daycare, and we all know that, but But we have daycare in our school right now for our teachers and it's going fine. And our teachers, you know, we're, we're pleased to be able to provide that, but our families don't have that. So the, the pain and, you know, the, the restrictions that it's putting on our families by having to teach, help teach their children is becoming detrimental in our society. And I feel that we really need to work towards letting our community have a choice, whether they want to take that risk and have in-school, or they want to remain and have a hundred percent virtual. And I don't know if that is something that we can work towards by October nineteenth, when we start our next semester, or if that is something that we can work towards when we start our next block or after, you know, our third semester. But I would hope that, you know, somehow as a board, we could come to some kind of agreement where we could give a little bit more of the grapefruit and not the grape for our kids returning back to school. I think it shows that, the number shows that not only our teachers, but our families are also in, in support of that and that somehow we should be able to work that together.
Well, we can't keep kicking the can down the road.
Nope.
You know, October, November, December. You know, there, there's a lot of folks in our community that are waiting tonight for an answer. Whatever it may be. And that, you know, you talk about the families in the community have to make some plans and changing plans. Very complex.
Any other comments? Do you want to have a comment?
I have a comment. I don't disagree that people want to plan. I don't disagree that teachers want their kids back in the classrooms. Parents want their kids back in school, but I think it's premature. That may be an unpopular opinion in this room right now. And Mr. Collins, I don't know where you're getting hundreds of emails from because the rest of us have probably gotten about fifty. And I check everyone to make sure that we've all gotten it. So if you're getting hundreds, either you're not sharing them with us or I don't know where that number comes from. Over, I'm not going to give a percentage, but a majority of our staff is not comfortable having students back in the building right now. Whether they have elderly parents, whether they don't live in King George and they're coming here from Stafford, Spotsylvania, whose numbers are higher than King George's, whether, whatever their reasons may be. So I think it's a misconception to say that, you know, all the teachers want to get back in the building. They do, they do, but they don't want to do it right now until things are safe. And I disagree that, I don't want to kick the can down the road either. We need a plan, we need a decision, we need to find something and stick to it. If we're going to do that in January, that's fine. But, you know, I was asked, you know, what's the end game? At what point do we know how it's going to look? We don't know. We don't know. And the CDC and all these other organizations that know way more about infectious diseases than I do or any of us do are saying, don't bring kids back five days a week. There's not, there's very few districts doing that. If they do, they're smaller, they have more money, or I don't know what their plan is, but some of them are shutting down again. So if you bring kids back and you got to quarantine one class for two weeks, then they fall behind. Then what do you do when they're exposed to their siblings? And then you got to quarantine that class. And, and I'm not saying any of these things are going to happen or I want them to happen. Of course we don't. But there are so many unknowns and there are so many questions still that I personally am not comfortable. And that's not my personal opinion. That's based on the emails that I've read, that's based on the feedback that I've gotten. If you're getting different feedback, Mr. Collins, I wish you'd share that with the rest of us because I haven't seen it. Thank you.
Well, I guess I'll have to address that issue.
I guess so.
Yes, I've gotten many, many emails, maybe hundreds. But I think that I've forwarded all the emails that I've given to you. But also I've talked with lots of folks in the community on a daily, weekly basis. But those numbers are all generated together of what, what I'm seeing, not what my opinion is, what people are saying to me. I mean, I see both, I see both sides. I see, I see that, that, you know, we look at the dashboard and we see what those numbers are and they're, they're pretty real. And so even when you look at the other counties, they're going down too. But we, you'll never be able to mitigate all of, it's just like anything else. You're not going to be able to mitigate any harm.
If we wait for the numbers to look perfect, we'll never get back to school.
The numbers are.
Yes, but that also means that they're, they're being responsible. You're right. The numbers are going to go up. If we, if we get kids back in school, there are a likelihood that the numbers will go up. But I think that what our numbers show is that we're being responsible. We're still going out to dinner. We're still, you know, people are still shopping. They're going out, they're socializing. I see it all the time. And so it's not like we're all still, you know, being like we were when it was phase one and we're, we're all hunkering down and we're staying inside. We are getting out. We are being exposed more. I use a public restroom. I don't care as much that somebody went in there before me and I'm scared to go in there. You know, we can't live in fear. At some point in time, we, we have to understand what the risks are, rate, evaluate the risk and let the people decide and choose what risk they want to take. That's all I'm saying.
So I would, so in response to that, so, and we've got a lot of feedback, right? Things like that, you know, people are still going out to eat, people are still shopping. I would argue things, while that is true in some regards, it's not really the same, right? So restaurants aren't packed full of people. There's a lot of takeout. They're not open to, in full capacity in many instances. People are shopping, yes, but largely those are adults wearing masks, walking around larger spaces, that sort of thing. There's a big difference between those sorts of instances and children who are by definition not maybe as responsible as adults in smaller spaces, especially we're talking about like the K through two, they're not going to be probably changing rooms, excuse me, rooms, they're going to be confined in smaller spaces. The teachers are going to be exposed to that. There's a big difference between what that looks like in the classroom setting and what that looks like in the real world that the rest of us as adults are experiencing. I know we think, like, yes, numbers in King George are low, but in reality, if we look at it, nothing has really changed since the schools closed in March. In fact, things are worse now in King George. While they're not terrible, thank heavens. And we're fortunate that we live in a rural community that doesn't have a ton of large events and packed things where there are a lot of people congregating. Things haven't changed and things are actually worse in King George now than they were in March, right? So while they're low, you know, especially they're also greater than they were when we began virtual instruction last month. And just based on all those facts, I'm not convinced that the benefits of returning to that in-person instruction really outweigh the health and safety risks of putting our students back in the school and our staff back to work. So, you know, many have pointed out the value of, of the value, the Dogron, the, the model. It's currently embraced by, embraced by Dogron, which is, you know, our county's biggest employer. Considering that they, you know, I think as a county, we can thank the base for what it's doing to keep our numbers low, right? You know, the, they've embraced the maximum telework position since March. The, the stance is not go to work if you want to. It's if you are capable of teleworking, please do so. So if, you know, this, obviously it's not, you know, not always comparing apples to apples, comparing the base to other things. But I think we could learn from that model. We as a school are required to provide education to our students and we are in fact doing that while it may look different from what it has in the past. And so whether, you know, I agree, it doesn't pay to kick the can down the road. You need to make a decision and stick with it. I completely agree. Just want to throw that out there. But as far as the, I do want to hit on the email topic. The feedback that we've, that we've received, so there hasn't been a whole lot of feedback, at least in my inbox, till this last week, when it really kicked off. So from our last meeting two weeks ago, I started keeping a tally. So I put a list on my refrigerator. And every time I got a phone call or an email, I, I logged in as to which it was, right? Are they voting to, in this case, to hybrid or virtual? But do they want, in general, do they want our children back in the schools now? Or do they want us to remain virtual and maintain the safety of our students and our staff? And so I agree, I have not gotten hundreds of emails before this morning, since I was not keeping tally, between public comments made at our last meeting, phone calls and emails that I have seen, which as Ms. Tolliver pointed out, have largely come to all of us as a board. I received about, so again, before today, I received about sixty-six emails. Of those nineteen were in advocating for an in-person return, of which one was a teacher. Thirty-nine of them were voting essentially for our schools to remain virtual. And of those twenty-five were teachers. And I think that's a big number, something to take into consideration. And in addition to that, about six were undecided. And then there were about fourteen new emails that rolled in today, of which I can remember two were virtual. So even if you add ten to the, a different column, that's actually more, more preferences for remaining virtual to remaining in person. So I just want to, from, you know, whether it's hundreds of emails or it's seventy emails, that's, that's the feedback that I've received.
So I, I don't think that in suggesting that we get back to school, that that means we go back a hundred percent, everybody goes back and that's the only option. I think we need to have options for the diversity, the division that we have in our community so that people have that option. Having an option of going back two days a week right now for K through twelve is great. That's a beginning. K through two, sorry, K through two. That's a start. You know, maybe if, if, you know, we find that it's, it's, has more room or whatever, we can extend that to K through three or K through four. Or, you know, work towards that. But I'm just saying that, you know, it's going to take time in order to develop how everybody can, or how more people can, students can come back and how that's going to look. And I think we should start to look at that as well. Yeah. So we want to go to public comment. Anybody else on the board?
No, I'm, I'm sure to hear public comment.
All right. So I have a long list of public comment. I'd like to go ahead and call two names at a time. If you just want to come down and sit in the front, one person could speak and the other person could just sit down. It might take a little bit of less time so that we're not all waiting for everybody to come down since we're socially distancing. So the first two names are Christina Triddle and Yvonne Richard. And I apologize if I mispronounce your name.
Hello. My name is Christina Triddle. I live at ninety-six oh seven Mary T's Court. I am both a parent and a first-grade teacher in King George County. First, I would like to point out, as Dr. Benson had mentioned, that I am extremely passionate about education and would love nothing more than to return to a traditional classroom setting with things as they were before Covid nineteen. However, as both a parent and a teacher, I do not feel that in-person instruction can be carried out in a safe or effective manner at this time. In order to provide the most appropriate education for each of our students, teachers rely on close contact with our students, particularly at the primary level. Based on the social distancing requirements for in-person instruction, teachers cannot adequately provide our students with the high-quality instruction necessary for their development. Additionally, one of the most fundamental benefits of in-person schooling is to provide students with social interaction. However, with these social distancing requirements in place, these interactions simply cannot take place. It is also not realistic to believe that we will be able to maintain even three feet of distance between students and teachers over the course of the school day, as Dr. Benson had mentioned. The thought of telling a six-year-old that they cannot come near their teacher or their classmates, I feel, could be even more detrimental to their already fragile emotional state. Some have argued that we should return to in-person schooling due to the low incidence of positive Covid nineteen cases in our community. However, I would argue that our low case numbers could be the result of our decision to close schools and limit social gatherings early on. Others have argued that virtual instruction is not appropriate for all students or isn't working. It is certainly true that virtual instruction is challenging. Students, teachers, administrators and families have been tasked with learning multiple new platforms for online learning. Many of these platforms are intimidating and challenging at first glance. However, I do believe from what I have seen from my own children and the students that I teach, that our current virtual learning model is working and will only continue to improve. I have seen incredible growth from my students and my own children. If you had asked me a month ago whether or not I thought this was going to work, my answer would have been entirely different. I never imagined that six-year-olds would be able to navigate online learning with such ease and skill. I realize that everyone's experience with online learning is different. However, I am also reminded that in our traditional schooling model, it often takes us six weeks or more for students to fully adjust to routines and begin to feel more comfortable within our classroom setting. I am already seeing students at a more comfortable level and they are already making more progress in these past few weeks than I would have expected to see in a traditional classroom format. Asking them to readjust to a new routine at this time will slow the progress that we are already making. It is my personal recommendation that King George County Schools continues with a one-hundred percent virtual learning model, at least through the end of the first semester. Students, families and teachers have all adjusted to the routines of virtual learning. Students are making progress and connecting with their teachers. I believe it is important for us to remember that there is a difference between ideal scenario and a best-case scenario. The ideal scenario would be for us to return to full in-person, five-days-a-week instruction we were accustomed to prior to the pandemic. However, in this case, I believe the best-case scenario at this time is to continue with one-hundred percent virtual instruction. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to make an announcement. Everybody has three minutes. And I don't like to interrupt you at two minutes and thirty seconds, so I'm just gonna do that real quick. You know, it's kind of weird, but I think since we have so many people, it's kind of important that we try to keep it to three minutes. And if you could just state your name when you come up there, I'd appreciate that as well.
Good evening. My name is Yvonne Richard. I live at eight four two one Cedar Lane. I'm a resident of the James Monroe District and I for one would like to say that I have many concerns about the reopening of our schools. I'm strongly opposed to the hybrid model of instruction that's been presented. I think that the only way to provide an equitable instruction for all of our learners and not cause teacher burnout is to continue with the hundred percent virtual plan. I realize that not all learners are blossoming with the one-hundred percent virtual plan, but I don't see that the benefits of a hybrid option outweighing those of the, the virtual option. Please know that I understand that you are elected to represent the citizens of your district, but you also represent the teachers and staff employed by our school board. For the second time since Covid began, the school board has decided to survey the needs and wishes of our parents ahead of those of our staff. And it is unfortunate that initially the staff survey did not include paraeducators in the list of positions. They work tirelessly every day to help provide the best education possible for our students. And without them, our school system would suffer immensely. Please think seriously about what you're asking of staff and families. When it was presented initially, the hybrid plan called for two days of personal, two days of in-person synchronous instruction and three days of asynchronous instruction. Now, some buildings are telling staff that not only will they need to provide in-person instruction, but also provide virtual instruction simultaneously. And I know that's not what Dr. Benson has shared tonight, but that is what some building principals are telling their staff. This is not an effective model of teaching. Virtual instruction requires a great deal of extra time and requires that the teacher be glued to their computer. Expecting teachers to also manage in-person learners at that time is just too much. It took us several weeks to work out the kinks of online instruction and because few, if any, King George County School staff had ever used Canvas to provide instruction before. Now that many of us are learning how to use Canvas from watching YouTube and searching Canvas user Facebook groups, we are improving our skills. Is our instruction perfect? No, it is not perfect. But are we getting better? Then yes, every day it gets better. Teachers, students and families are learning the routines and we're learning how to navigate the platforms. If we were required to switch from a, to a hybrid plan at this point, we will have to start again from scratch. Instructional time will be lost for our students. However, the most important resource that this district has, the teachers, the ones who are actually in every classroom, providing instruction every day to your children, will lose any hope that we have any value to you. We already work long hours. We didn't get a pay raise this year. And we have not been provided adequate training or guidance to implement an entirely new learning platform in such little time. Zero guidance has been given to us on how to provide uniformity across the district. And I feel like that is a lot of our issues and the family issues with the virtual instruction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richard. Okay. I'd like to call Brian Gregan and Crystal Abel.
Brian.
Brian, is that, it's Brian, I'm sorry.
I'm Brian Gregan. I'm at ninety-four eighty-five Elm Court and I have a first grader and a fifth grader at King George Elementary. And first of all, I want to thank the board for a lot of, all the board members responded to my multiple inquiries in various manners. And Ms. Tolliver was kind enough to have a pretty lengthy discussion with me, which helped give me a lot of perspective on the whole situation, you know, regarding the, the staff and their, their, their thoughts and feelings on the situation. And from the statistics, you know, there's definitely a little bit of a disconnect between the parents and the staff as far as in-person is, instruction is concerned. And I do appreciate the fact that I'm new to the community. We've been here about a year. And, and the, the level of care and concern that the board has for the community as a whole is really refreshing. community as a whole is really refreshing, and it's, it's nice, you know, it's really, I feel like I'm in, and we're in the right place, I feel like. But, um, as far as my beliefs, my feelings on in-person instruction, I would prefer five-day instruction, um, with a maskless classroom. Now, I know that's not probably too, um, too exciting for, for some folks, but that's, ideally, I feel like that's the best, um, environment for my children. Now, I know that's, might not be doable considering the VDOE requirements, the CDC recommendations, et cetera, um, but, and I hope that if, um, the, the option is taken off the table and it's, but it's brought up again, I just hope that in the interim, you know, if things improve, that, 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 and I know you, the board will be on top of it, but as far as like surveying the parents and teachers, to try to get them as close to be on the same page as possible, you know, with what will make them feel comfortable, you know, possibly, you know, surveys on, on, on rapid testing, will that make you feel better, vaccines, you know, et cetera, um, even though vaccine's not looking too likely until the, you know, middle to the end of next year. But I feel like at some point, we have to move forward because we may never be at COVID-zero. And, and, um, I think, I feel like the longer this goes with, with, um, the public education system, that it may be a threat to the public education system eventually, because, you know, as parents, you have to make decisions at some point, you know, and, and do you want your kids to have in-person, is there another option for you, is there homeschooling option, you know, I think that, um, that we'll just have to make some tough decisions at some point as far as having some in-person option, and I just hope that that is available to, to the, to the community at some point in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Crystal Abel. I live at 8530 Stevenson Drive in King George. I'm a second-grade special education teacher at Sealston Elementary School. I'm also a parent of four kids in the school system. I have a third grader, I have a middle schooler, and I have two high schoolers. Um, I know you have a really difficult decision to make regarding what happens next. I just want to ask that whatever you do, you consider our needy learners, and I appreciate, Dr. Benson, your plan for the K-2, but I also want you to consider our special education kids. I have second graders, but I know that there are other special education grade levels that are struggling too. These kids struggle with reading, and now we're asking them to look at a computer to figure out what to do. They don't all have support at home. So we're putting these kids out essentially on their own. I have kids that aren't completing work, that aren't getting help, and we're really leaving them further behind by not giving them something. Um, I've been through the last four weeks of learning as a teacher, a parent, and a community member. I've kept an open mind. As a teacher, I'm putting in far more hours than I am contracted, just to make sure I'm trying to give my kids what they need. As a parent, I cry. I have guilt because I'm giving my students more than I can give my kids. Um, I'm trying to be a part-time teacher for my kids, but I'm trying to give everything to my students so that they can be successful because I know they need it. I can appreciate that my own students, my own children, can at least access their education. My middle and high schoolers, they're able to manage. My third grader tells me all the time, mommy, virtual learning is stressful. It's hard, and I get it, but I can appreciate that at least he accesses his education. But these younger students who cannot read, these special education students who cannot read, that gap is growing, and we're leaving them behind. Um, as a community member, I hear the rants of people who want their kids in school. I hear the frustrated cries of my friends who are trying to work from home or work outside of the home and still give their student, their own students what they need. I know I'm not alone in any of these experiences. And there are other teachers, parents, and community members who are also experiencing the same. My students, in order to figure out what they have to do, I've had parents emailing me and students asking me, what am I supposed to do? Because they have a Canvas page for their general education teacher and a Canvas page for their special education teacher. And the way that I'm solving that right now is at 10 o'clock at night, I'm going into their teachers' Canvas pages, and I'm creating a to-do list and posting it individually by kid in a separate section in Canvas. Canvas doesn't have Read Aloud. It's supposed to, it doesn't. So we're recording, as teachers, we are recording directions for our kids. Maybe they know to click on it, maybe not. And we're instructing it, and we're doing our best, but they need more.
Thank you, Ms. Abel.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we have two more. Deanne Shaw and Jeffrey Nesmith.
Hi, my name is Deanne Shaw. I live at 9224 Carriage Lane. I teach kindergarten at Potomac Elementary School. Did you know, Virginia's had their first teenager to die of a COVID-related death? Well, I did not know her. She was a cheerleader and a student in my hometown. One student too many. Yes, the number of infections in King George is low, but think of how many employees commute daily. Think of the students that will be in contact with staff that commutes daily. That's one staff member too many. The CDC says children are likely to experience asymptomatic symptoms. So how are we gonna, how are our screening measures going to work if they exhibit no symptoms? What about those students who are sent to school with fever-reducing medications? What happens when I get it and I bring it to my family? One family too many. Virginia's First Lady exposed an entire preschool facility of Mary Washington Healthcare Employee Children just last week. We've had COVID-positive cases at Potomac Elementary, Sealston Elementary, and at King George High School, and that's just what I know of. That's one school too many. Keep our schools virtual until we can say we have a handle on this virus. At the very least, create a roundtable discussion group consisting of teachers of various grades, administrators, counselors, custodians, nurses, bus drivers, parents, emergency service personnel, infectious disease liaisons, and school board members and central office staff to discuss concerns in the entire community prior to making any decision regarding opening or reopening. It is too late, it's just too many. With community involvement and careful leadership, each of these cases could have been prevented. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, school board, my name is Jeff Nesmith, how are you? Well, it's my wife Catherine, by the way. Father of four that have been through your schools, I've, one, my daughter graduated from here a couple of years ago. I got a freshman here and a senior here, and I've got one at Sealston as well. I, I just feel like, uh, I'm, I'm an advocate for having the kids back full-time. I'd love to see them actually return to school all the time. I think that, um, I just, uh, I don't understand why we haven't got there yet or have a better plan. I, I listened to what you were saying, doctor, and I, I seen that some of those ideas were there, and once again, I was kind of upset that there wasn't a five-day plan, or at least a goal towards a five-day plan, because, I mean, ultimately, that, that's where we want to be. And, and I understand from a, a teacher standpoint that a lot of these teachers are frustrated and, you know, they're doing a lot more work and, you know, but on the other hand...
Can I interrupt you just for a second? I'm curious there, if the teachers are being told as well that they need to both teach instruction online and in classrooms, could that be contributing to their reason of not wanting to return to school? If, if they're doing it this way, and it's, they're teaching one way, and then you're going to ask them to come back and teach two ways, then obviously, if that was my job, I'd say I don't want to do it either. So are they not wanting to come back for health reasons, or are they not wanting to come back because it's going to be more complicated?
Because I, I think that they were...
They shouldn't, they shouldn't have to teach both. But for teachers to be concerned about health issues, and they work in a, in a school system, the schools, I mean, sorry. You're, you're, you're encountering every germ in the county when you're a teacher. I can't imagine that they're concerned that, as teachers, they want to stay home because they don't want to get sick, when, if they're already immunocompromised, they probably shouldn't be teachers in the first place.
Well, aside from that, I don't think we're ever really going to get rid of COVID.
Right, it's not going to be a zero.
It's never going to go away.
The risk is never going to be zero.
So the risk is never going to be zero.
And we can talk about one student dying, but we had a student die last year of a health condition. We have people die all the time.
I had a student get, there was a student that was killed in Fredericksburg by, you know, somebody mugging him. So, I mean, if you want to talk about deaths, there was a kid that died on the court here.
And it's, it's all senseless. But I'm not saying I agree with death at all.
How many kids have died in car accidents?
But we need the kids to go back to school. We really do.
You know, I mean, every day, there's, there's somebody dying from something. You know, flu, flu is rampant too, yeah, like she said, the flu season's coming.
Yeah.
How are you going to decipher between COVID and flu?
I'm a registered nurse, I work at Mary Washington ICU, and I say the kids should go back to school.
Thank you. Okay, the next two on the list is, um, John Burrows and Dee Strauss. Mr. Burrows here? Oh, there he is, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I took the long way.
That's okay.
My name is John Burrows, my wife Christina, we live at 5204 Longbow Road in King George, Pop Yard Farm. We have two boys, uh, one started kindergarten this year, uh, and one is in third grade, both at Sealston Elementary School. I want to make a couple of points or maybe pose like a few questions. I've repeatedly heard, both in the news, from the CDC, and now tonight, from Dr. Benson, when it is safe? Now, I've not heard anybody define what that makes, what, what that looks like, what is safe? Where is the, going to be the ending point where we've reached safe? If we haven't decided that, maybe we need to take a minute and decide where we, or you as a school board, or we as a society, decide that we have reached a safe point. Because I'm, you know, I spend a lot of time, uh, in my, my line of work in the public, and I can tell you, uh, people are outside, people are interacting, uh, their children are outside, they're dining, now, there's long waits at restaurants, every Walmart I go in, there's children and people shopping, like, nothing's wrong. Only when we talk about bringing our kids back to school is it no longer safe. And, and that concerns me a little bit because I, I don't understand if it's at this point about being safe, or if it's about the paranoia, uh, over the virus. But frankly, a virus that there's no cure on the horizon for, uh, in fact, there's no vaccine on the horizon for, and in this county, based on what you put up tonight, has an almost zero hospitalization rate and a very, very low mortality rate. So I guess that's a question I pose, uh, to you all, is where is safe? My second point, uh, and I appreciate everybody's time this evening, and I know this is a very difficult decision, I know it's very difficult, uh, to make these decisions, and I know you've had a tough time looking at all of this since March. However, you have looked at this since March. Uh, we knew at some point, we were going to have to go beyond virtual school. So tonight, having, I think, two less options than I was given in a survey several months ago, is disheartening. You at least know there's public opinion that we should be returning to school, part-time, full-time, virtually. We need to have more than three options. Looking back to March to now, that's the better part of a year to come up with some plan, and tonight I'm hearing a lot of, it's going to be difficult, we're going to have to find the resources. That time has gone. You've had the time, and I think we, as parents and taxpayers in this county, expect a little bit better than hearing now that we are on the verge of returning, at least to a two-day, uh, a week instruction, that we need more time to figure it out. I think the time is up. Thank you.
Good evening. Madam Chairman, school board members, Dr. Benson and staff, and members of the audience, both live and virtual. My name is Dee Strauss. I'm a resident of King George County and a marketing teacher and DECA advisor here at King George High School. I love teaching and what I do with my students in class and outside of class. I love the relationships developed, not only between me and my students, but between the students themselves, developed through the interactions that are provided in our school and in King George community setting. I'd like to respectfully provide you with my update. Learning new systems and routines takes time. I think we've got it now. We're finally in the swing of our virtual online learning environment. Teachers and students have got the hang of Canvas, and the students are truly in control of their learning. What a great place to be, in control. This is what I told my DECA officer team as we met over the summer, and it's what I told all of my students on the first days of school, that first week. They are in control of their education. Be all in and take it to the next level. It is in their hands. We may not be physically together, but we will get this done together. What would the best update be to hear? Everyone back in the building. That would be the best thing to hear, but, oh, wait, that's not even an option yet. But let me go on. But if everyone back in the building, is that wise at this time? You have to weigh the risk versus the benefit. What happens if any, even one or multiple positive results of COVID tests start happening within our schools? It's back to virtual, like we are now. What would be the next type of update to hear? Everyone, hybrid time. I can just hear the students now. Blue, gold, which one am I? I got to learn something new again? That will take me another three to four weeks. I can just hear the teachers now. Blue, gold, school colors? Wait, I have to learn to teach a different way again? That will take me another three or four weeks. But is everybody hybrid wise at this time? Is it wise for October 15th or 19th? What happens if any, even one or multiple positive results of COVID tests start happening? It's back to virtual, like we are now. What would be the very best update to hear right now, today? Everyone, virtual for the rest of the semester. We've learned how to do this. Now is not the time to throw in another routine to learn. Now is not the time to ask our teachers and staff to reinvent yet another wheel. Now is not the time to cut visible access for students to teachers in half with a blue and gold, half and half, hybrid model. We're currently in virtual class with our students four days a week. Why cut it in half? Respectfully, my recommendation is that we will continue with this virtual school setting through the rest of the fall semester. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Okay, the next two are Justina Markowitz and Jennifer Daniels.
I think my argument might be a little bit different. I know that the decisions you have to make are not easy, but you are the ones in the position to make these decisions, and you have the power to make things change. And I do believe that the well-being and success of our children are dependent on some big changes. And I'm not going to argue if it's safe to go back or we should stay home. I'm going to argue right now that what we have is not sustainable. I spent 10 years in the classroom before switching careers, and I'm currently an instructional designer with extensive experience taking virtual courses and experience creating courses in Canvas and Blackboard. I know that virtual learning can be more efficient and effective than our county is doing it. As a parent with the knowledge and experience that I have, it's frustrating and absolutely infuriating to see my children go through what they do every day. With proper training, software, and support, our teachers could, they can nail virtual instruction. It is totally possible. But we've kind of left them out there to struggle, and, um, they're struggling to accommodate our kids, our 504s and our IEPs, they're not transitioning to online instruction. Instruction, math, is not transitioning. Instruction, math, is not transitioning to online instruction. Kids are struggling. Our parents are struggling. I'm gonna bring up cognitive overload. This is when too much information or too many tasks are given to learners simultaneously, resulting in the learner being unable to process information. Our brain can only process so much at one time. Working memory is limited in storage. Our working memory is what is converted into long-term memory, which is essential when learning new skills. But that transfer is negatively impacted when there's cognitive overload. And the way our students are being instructed right now is completely cognitive overload. And I watch it in my sixth grader every day. I see meltdowns that I haven't seen since she was a toddler. And I hear from teachers, well, I modeled that, or I instructed that, and I completely believe that, but she's not retaining it. It's too much at one time. I sat with her and tried to get to an English reading. About eight clicks deep, I still couldn't get to it. Our students are having to click that much because our software is inadequate to be able to link our textbooks. Some of them may, but they're not all linking. And our teachers could have it much easier. And our students and our families deserve for you to do something more. Find it in the budget, write whatever grants we have to write to give our students the education they deserve. And I know that I'm cut off, but I have provided some information and research for you all, and a little bit more in-depth of my experience.
Thank you.
Okay. Within these documents, you'll find where our special needs, ELL, and youngest students are prioritized to return to school first, as they have the greatest need for in-person instruction. My son is five, in kindergarten at Potomac. His teacher has been helpful in understanding of my son's and other students' needs. I'm not here to complain about teachers. The work that they do is amazing, too much is put on them, and I'm grateful to them. I am here to tell you that what we are doing now for virtual learning is not working. It's gone so far that I'm concerned for my child's and my own emotional health and that of my peers. It's time for schools to reopen. Despite state guidelines, King George decided to delay everyone in person until October. I understand. COVID is real, it's scary, and they wanted to ease into the process. Now, the school board has sent another survey, trying to decide if we should open for the set date in mid-October. There shouldn't be a question at this point. Virtual learning will not work for most kindergartners. My son and his friends are struggling. We've had daily tears, meltdowns. I've heard countless stories from peers about how much of a struggle this is. I've seen too many photos of crying five-year-olds, even from Ms. Shaw's class. Most kindergartners can't read, use a computer properly, or sit still for more than five minutes. Yet they're now expected to do all of this. I have other responsibilities. As a kindergarten parent, I have to sit directly beside my son the whole time school is in session. I can't step away to take care of baby or use the restroom without something happening. I'm fortunate to be a stay-at-home parent. What is this like for working parents? This has to stop. Stores have been open since the beginning of the pandemic, as have daycares. If hundreds of people can cram into a Walmart or a daycare, my son can safely return to school. My son wears a mask without complaint, better than most adults I know. The numbers that keep coming out show that his risk is minimal. At this point in Virginia, it seems it's minimal to most of the normal population. The teachers that are high-risk or fearful can stay virtual, which would work well for the families that want to stay virtual. The extreme burden that this has placed on families emotionally and financially is too much. I believe it's time to open back up five days a week. I understand the fear of jumping in full-time and wanting to start with a staggered schedule. By January, they need to be back full-time. They've already lost so much. Private schools open locally already and are functioning well. What magic number or thing will happen for us that we're waiting for? Is it a question of not wanting to assume risk? There's always risk. Has the school board not considered a waiver for parents of children that need to be back in school full-time? I'm only a kindergarten parent, I can't speak for others. But as a parent of a child that cannot read, has limited computer experience, and bad internet service, this isn't working. Our internet is a huge challenge. It's not working for 504 or IEP students either, that truly need and benefit from in-person school. And what about children abused in their homes? And school is their only safe space? It's time to reopen.
Thank you very much. The next two are David Sutton, I believe, and Claire Marillo.
Before, on the other side, good evening. My name's David Sutton. I want to start off those statements. Teachers are essential workers. I lived here in King George County for four years. We chose to live in King George because it's a rural community, and it has a reputation, had a reputation for great schools. I have a rising, I have a senior in high school right now, and all of his years in King George, the staff and instruction have been excellent. But as parents, we know that school is more than academics. Since March, our kids have been sequestered from the necessary interaction with their peers and adult role models outside the home, and it is taking its toll on their emotional development, and in some cases, their physical well-being. High school athletics and participation in health and wellness classes build a lasting foundation for wellness that cannot be replicated online. My son no longer participates in band, but for those kids who do participate in the arts, what is being done to continue their development? Many of us are blessed to still have employment, homes, and food on our table. But some of our brothers and sisters in the community are less fortunate. There have been reports that many children in our area may only get a nutritious meal while they're in school, and that's sad. As a believer in lifelong education, I have had and continue to take online courses. But we all know that computer instruction can never take the place of learning in an interactive environment. Ability to ask questions, stay after class to get help for an assignment, and get feedback from a teacher face-to-face can never be replicated in a virtual environment. The COVID-19 pandemic has infected us all. But we know, but I know from personal experience in the Army Reserves and as an essential worker in the civilian world, proper mitigation practices have proven to lessen the likelihood of contracting this illness. And I'll say it again, teachers are essential workers. Ma'am, you said something about the restaurants, you know, not being full. That's because it's against the law. They can't be full right now. If they could, they would. Also, ma'am, I heard you say something about some of the schools, schools that opened, that have opened up are in smaller communities. Well, there's a small community outside of New York City called Suffolk County, New York. I don't know what the population is, but it's pretty big, and they're going to school full-time right now. You can check it out. Our churches are already proving that we can assemble to worship, assemble to worship, and reduce the risk of infection. The wearing of masks inside the school should be mandatory. Washings of hands in physical distancing should be enforced. And I say physical distance because I don't believe in social distance. It's physical distance. The six feet is, is a physical distance. But what we're doing now is we're, we're making our kids socially inept by excluding them from the interaction that they have the rest of the students. They should be back, brought back to the classroom at the earliest opportunity. There's a lot at stake at the November election, but nothing in November is more important than the education of our children right now. As a voter in King George County, I pledge that any school board member that votes to keep our kids from bringing children back to school will not get my vote in the next school board election. Thank you, and thank you for your service to the community.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Claire Marillo. I live at 685 Curtis Circle. I have children in the fifth and seventh grade, and I wanted to publicly commend the principles of both Potomac and King George Middle for doing their very best to answer questions that our family had. But they seem to struggle for some of the similar uncertainties and unknowns as we do. We all want a path to a five-days-per-week at school. Our, our family supports that, but certainty is important, as is consistency. And I would argue that more options on the table are not always better. The introduction of uncertainty could, and many times introduces more problems than the options are actually looking to solve. 100% virtual is working, pretty well, actually, for our family. But it won't anymore if the blended model, especially as introduced, comes into the table. The pace of learning will be affected, the teacher and student pairing will be different. The organization of classes around the geography and buses, as opposed to academic ability, learning styles, strengths and weaknesses, won't be a possibility any longer. The staff simply cannot support both models from what I've come to understand. Dr. Benson's slides and the comments by Ms. Gonzalez and Ms. Tolliver kind of highlighted some of the points, expressed well the issues with the original blended option. And I think those are only exacerbated and cause problems for the virtual model if both are on the table at the same time. And, and what I would ask too, I'm a project manager by, by, you know, career, and we talk in terms of roadmaps. So what is a reasonable roadmap? We can't just continue, as you have all said, kicking the can down the road, taking this one step at a time, two weeks or a month at a time. Our schools simply cannot plan around that way. They can't plan around that kind of moving bar. It goes back to the consistency. This is a risk management question. None of us here are health professionals, at least I don't think we are, but I think there was a nurse in the audience. But health data, I spent some time in public health myself for Department of Homeland Security, and health data fluctuates until a decade down the road, when you can look at it as, as an epidemiological retrospective. And what's safe? And who decides? Do you decide? Dr. Benson, Madam Chairman? What's a good plan for safety? The school outlined a good one, but hand washing? How do you get 20 kids without a sink in the classroom to walk down the hallway to wash their hands safely? The schools need time to figure that out, and I believe they haven't been able to plan in such a detailed way, because we haven't told them what the roadmap is. And unless we give them a roadmap with a clear future, they won't get there. If we can't all go back virtually, I mean, I'm sorry, if we cannot all go back normally now, I think our best option is to stay virtual until December or January, and take that time to lay out a legitimate roadmap to the five days a week, so we can do it successfully and safely.
Thank you. Okay, so the next two are Deborah Almasi and Holly Windus.
Hello. My name is Deborah Almasi. I live in the Meadows neighborhood. And forgive me, I don't have a prepared speech, I'm gonna wing it. I am in one of those neighborhoods that has absolutely no internet and terrible cell reception, so the hotspots are just horrific. I have, I don't have young ones anymore. I have a freshman and a senior. They're, one of them is in CBGS, one of them is in CGS. It's a demanding program. And with no internet, you could just imagine, they are beyond anything that I can help them with. I cannot teach them these classes. So we have had some meltdowns in our house, they are not young kids. And it's a problem. I'd prefer to be in school, because I cannot give them what they need at home. They're, some of their classes actually are not even being taught, they're watching videos. So there's, there's not a lot of instruction in some of the classes. And I'm not, I won't say what classes, it's not necessarily CBGS or CGS. They're pretty interactive. But we need something better than what we have. I will say about the survey, for me anyway, and a lot of people I talked to, the two-day thing that I opted for, I didn't understand completely. I didn't realize that it would be three days of no instruction and two days of instruction only. I would not have picked that option. That, that's an unrealistic option, we can't go from four days to two days. I'd rather stay virtual, but they're just not getting what they need online, especially a family like mine without the internet. I'd like to see a different survey come out. And, and an idea, I don't know if it is feasible, but can they set up cameras in the classroom, where the teachers can teach in class, and families like mine can go to class, and the families who don't want to go to class can remain virtual? But the teacher is still teaching all of them at the same time with cameras set up in the classroom? I don't know if that's feasible, but it would be a nice option if they could do it. Well, I'm not a teacher, so. Oh, and then another option to a survey, how many parents would be willing to bring their children to school rather than using the busing services? I would be. I think a lot of parents would be willing to do that to lessen the burden on getting your kids to school, if we were given that option. I do work, I have not been getting a lot of work done, because I've spent most of my time trying to be an IT tech, which I am not. And so we don't have the option of having a daycare or having someone help us with this stuff. It's, it's put a burden on everybody. I understand it's a burden on the teachers, but it's a huge burden on the students and the parents as well. And, and it is causing a huge problem, and our kids are suffering for it, and so are the families, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Almasi. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Holly Windus?
Madam Chairman, Board members, Dr. Benson. My name is Holly Windus. I live at 8248 Saddle Drive in Fox Run. I have four children in the King George School District, two, three of which that go to Sealeston Elementary and one at the middle school. And more importantly, I'm a, I'm a cancer survivor twice over. And I also have a daughter that has a respiratory. She uses steroids, so she has upper respiratory disease. And we are fully committed and proponents of going back to school 100%. My children are suffering with the current state of affairs. They are socially feeling like they are, they have been left behind. They want to go to school. My husband and I both want them to go to school, all go to school. We are both full, fully employed. We don't work on base, but we work, well, my husband works on base, I work for a contractor for the base. And having the hours that we put in at a daily basis, giving the, coming home and giving the attention that we need to give our children, who are really struggling with the current platforms, it's not sustainable. And I understand that there are people who are scared about going back to school, but this isn't gonna get better. COVID-19 is here to stay, the vaccine won't be a miracle drug, it'll still be like the flu. And I understand that there are a lot of hurdles in the way of going back 100%. However, I think one thing that has been established tonight is that we don't have the criteria established to fully open. And that's what we're missing. What we're missing is we have not fully established what criteria needs to happen in order to be fully open schools. And once we create that roadmap, or lay out that criteria, we can work towards that in a systematic way to try to mitigate the risk as much as possible, yet still get back in school where the kids will. Thank you.
The next two are Melissa Fitz. The next two are Melissa Fitz and Kimber Green.
I'm Kimber, not Melissa, so I'm guessing she left.
She's up here. All right, go ahead, Ms. Green. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Kimber Green, and I am here to implore you to reopen. The mental health of our children as well as the families are at stake. We have a second grader who just turned seven last month. He used to love going to school. I would pick him up and he would be so excited to tell me about his day. It's heartbreaking to watch him suffer through virtual school now. The deal that he used to have for education is dwindling rapidly. He has cried multiple times. Virtual school is just too much for some children, especially young ones. I spoke with his teacher and I spoke with the principal. One thing that sticks with me from the latter conversation is, I don't know if parents don't tell me. Perhaps the board members don't know if they are not witnessing it firsthand, what students are going through, who are going through education virtually. I'm here to tell you it's devastating. The American Academy of Children and Adolescent Psychiatry, as well as the Mayo Clinic, the American Heart Association, and all recommend children ages six and up limit their screen time to two hours a day, two hours. My husband and I both work from home, yet we take turns sitting with our son. He can't do this work alone. We sit with him through virtual classes, then we do all of the assignments with him. On Friday, we finished at 4:00 PM. Three times we have finished at dinnertime. One of those nights he cried, and I asked him why, and he said, "It never ends." Again, the recommendation is two hours. What are we doing to our children and why? According to these same associations, too much screen time can lead to serious problems, including sleep problems, lower grades, loss of social skills, and behavioral problems. We say our children are our future. What future are we leading them to? Our children are stressed. They are overstimulated. Adults don't sit at computers all day. How do we expect young children to sit at a computer all day? You even said you don't expect them to sit at the desk for three hours in person. We take a lot of computer functions for granted because we have been using computers for a long time. Seven-year-olds do not use computers for a long time. Before virtual school started, we didn't use computers with our child. Entering second grade, our child is expected to know how to use a computer, to open multiple tabs, to click multiple links. Our son asked me the first day, "What does a tab mean? What does to scroll mean?" He doesn't know how to do any of these functions. He can't do any of these on his own. The teachers expect them to type in the question box. If you have a question, please type it in the question box. They can't type. They can't find the letter T, and the teacher has moved on. They get left behind. The live lessons are just not working for our children, especially our younger children. They need to go back to school. Please, I implore you, reopen the schools.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Alex McKenna?
Good evening. My name is Alex McKenna. I live in Presidential Lakes. None of you are wearing them, so I'm not wearing it either. Twenty years in the military, twenty years as a first responder. Of that twenty years in the military and as a first responder, I was doing chemical, biological, radiological, and nuclear response. That's chemical, biological, and nuclear weapons. These don't do anything, nothing. The microns of the coronavirus go right through it. This whole paranoia and fantasy about droplets? How come we weren't handling droplets during the flu season last year or 15 years ago or 30 years ago? Viruses come and go. This whole thing has tore, it is tearing my family apart. I've got five boys. That's our choice, a first grader and a fourth grader. Every single day, my fourth grader is crying because he has headaches and sitting in front of that computer. They don't know what they're doing. They need to be back in class. My first grader, every single day, I miss my friends. I miss my friends. When can I go back to school, Dad? When can I go back to school? You, all of you up here, are torturing our children. You're devastating our children. From the looks of it, I think only one of you has school-aged children. How many of you have school-aged children in school right now? What's it doing to your children?
I teach my grandchildren. I have.
Good, you can teach. I can't. I have to go to work full-time in Washington DC. My wife has to take care of three other children. It must be nice to be a teacher and sit home with your children and teach them. I'm not a teacher. You all failed these students from day one. There's something called continuity of operations. It's called COOP, Risk Management. Day one, in January, February, when this shit hit the fan, you all should have been planning that. I don't know who's in charge of your continuity operations or your emergency management system in this district, but they need to be fired. Day one, all of this should have been planned. A plan should have already been put in place for continuity of operations. If the school shut down, how do we continue education? That's the first question of a continuity of operations plan. Where is your continuity of operations plan? Where was it? Did you follow one, or you guys just making it up on the fly? This is ridiculous. This whole paranoia, and nobody's reading the facts of these other things. It's not 200,000 people dead or 230,000 people dead. It's 20,000 people in the United States have died directly due to COVID. All the other deaths, they got hit by a bike. They tested positive for COVID. They jumped off a building, tested positive for COVID, died of leukemia, tested positive for COVID. The numbers are inflated to inflict fear, and it's reflected here and everywhere else. These kids need to be back in school, and they need to be back in school yesterday. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McKenna. Okay, so we have comments from people that are online. So I just need to, would like to make an announcement for all of those that are giving comment online. Mr. Vance is going to let you know that you can start your comment. If we don't hear from you within one minute, we are going to go ahead and move on to the next person.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Hello, my name is Jennifer Truitt. I live at 11335 Millbank Road. I teach at Sealston Elementary School, and I have a freshman and a senior at King George High School. I've already sent my comments to the board, so I'm not going to reread them. I'm just going to add a couple of things that I noticed tonight. While I would love to be teaching in person, I'm here to strongly support option two, continuing 100% virtual instruction through at least the fall semester. My primary reason is the health and safety of the entire community. I am concerned about my own health, but I'm more concerned about the effects of the virus on King George as a whole. Bringing students back to the building will almost certainly increase the local spread of the virus right before Thanksgiving and Christmas break, when the students are most likely to be with their extended and elder family members. I don't think people who aren't teachers realize how often students are sent into school without or having been given Tylenol for a fever. I hope that wouldn't happen during a pandemic, but there's no way to be sure that it won't. We've already discussed the blended model being an inefficient and incomplete model for students. And I do want to point out that while I understand that virtual learning is not ideal for all, it's important to note that it is working well for some, and it's improving for most of us. My daughter says that she is more able to concentrate, less distracted, and more efficient at completing her work in the virtual setting. Option three. Although I realize that virtual learning is more difficult and less effective with the youngest students, I'm concerned about both the extra workload that that would put on our K-2 teachers. They would have to teach the same content in the morning and then again in the afternoon. Also, the afternoons are dedicated to small group instruction, which is really vital with our youngest learners. Although the option three does get students back in person, it effectively removes the small group portion of their instruction. And my last point really is that my primary concern about returning to school is the health and safety of the entire community, not just the students, not just the teachers, although, you know, but also, like Ms. Shaw said, everybody else that we come into contact with. I don't know who said this, but a quote that I heard was, "Just because we are done with the pandemic doesn't mean the pandemic is done with us." And that's why I support option two, continuing virtual instruction throughout the first semester. I do want to add that I really appreciate the hard job that you all have. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Great, great. My name is Jessica Crockett. I live at 9380 Caucus Drive. I have a son currently enrolled in King George Middle School in eighth grade. I just want to let everyone know that academically, his grades are thriving this year. However, socially, he is falling further behind than he already is. My son does have severe ADHD and has a 504 plan. And socially speaking, he needs to return to school. I do think that all the students need to return to school on a five-day basis. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name is Stephanie Marsage. I live at 8290 Fairbanks Court. And my comments today concern staying 100% virtual through the rest of the semester. I am in favor of that option. One of the reasons is because we don't know how this virus is going to behave once the winter comes. Flu transmission, we know, becomes easier in the winter because of the colder air, the drier air. It may end up being the same for COVID. It may not, which would be great. But my point is, we really don't know what the winter is going to bring. And what we do know is that this virus is very opportunistic. Initially, we saw it rampage through nursing homes and seriously affect the elderly. Then we started opening up bars and restaurants, and suddenly the 20 to 30 age bracket was seeing spikes in cases because of that. Colleges opened, so then the spike in cases was in the college-age students. And who's to say if we open now, that the next spike in cases won't be that five to 17 age bracket? I know that data is coming out indicating that schools that have opened have low caseloads. And again, that's encouraging, but that data does not include how this virus is going to behave once the winter sets in. And then this, this was kind of addressed earlier. But there's also the fear, at least in, for my part in my head, that parents will send their children to school sick. We all do it. I have gone to work sick. I will admit it. And that unfortunately is a societal issue that is not the job of the boards to address. But there's nothing to stop a parent from sending an asymptomatic child who's been tested with COVID-19 to school. And then that child affects others, and suddenly we have cases raging through the school, which could then shut down schools again. So now we've yo-yoed our children between virtual learning, then we send them back to school. Now suddenly we have case spikes. We have the virus present in the schools, and now we have to shut down schools again, and they're back to virtual. And that's just not a consistent environment for children at all. So I am definitely in favor of the 100% virtual learning, at least through this, this semester till the end of December. I thank you for your time and attention, and I thank you all for the hard work that you have been doing.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Ainsley Hibbard. I live at 11228 Brassica Lane in Hopyard Farm. I just wanted to say thank you all for all of this hard work. I know it's been mentioned before, but I do not envy any of your positions right now. We've been listening for over two hours now as to how everyone feels about this. And I love option three, and I really haven't heard many people talk specifically to that. I will say I have a daughter who is in kindergarten at Sealston Elementary. Mrs. Brant is a wonderful teacher, and if I could give that woman a hug every single day of my life, then I would. I have nothing bad to say about how things are going virtual with the teacher. My issue really is with a lot of the asynchronous work that we've been having to do with my specific child. And the option three sounds like a very good option for kids. It sounds like staff has said that they feel like they are not getting through to the kids the way that they should. And my personal opinion is that my kindergartner would learn much, much better in person. I'm not going to speak to the specifics of the actual virus and where things are going there. That's already been talked on. I just wanted to comment and say that I feel as a parent of a kindergartner who has not gone any further in the system other than kindergarten, I do feel like option three is a very, very good option for the kids that feel, and the parents really that feel like they need to get more than what we're getting right now, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Amber Wise. I live in Oakland Park, and we have a first grader at Sealston. I want to commend our teacher, Mrs. Tenetti. She is fabulous. She goes above and beyond for all of her students. And that is not a question at all. What I would like to say is that as parents, we mitigate the risk for our child from day one. I was scared to death to put my newborn in a car just to get him home from the hospital. But we did it, and the more often we do it, we get used to it. What used to be normal for us to send our children to school has been turned into scary thing now because of this threat of the boogeyman COVID monster. But our county is doing great. Our number's the lowest. I think we can blaze this trail and bring all of our kids back five days a week and be the example of how it can be done well. The teachers are totally appreciated and essential workers to all of us in the community. And I, as someone who takes immunosuppressors, I've been taught to fear the world around me by just leaving my house. But guess what? We go to Walmart. We go to the grocery store. We go out to eat. We went out of the state to visit family. Have we been sick? No, not once, because we wash our hands. We follow guidelines. We stay distant from people. But that doesn't stop us from talking to people we don't know and just being a positive influence in everyone's lives. And if we can get back to some sort of normal with the school system, I feel like that's going to overflow into everyone's lives in a positive way where our children are going to be able to flourish and thrive. Because my six, my soon-to-be six-year-old is in first grade. He doesn't pay attention to that computer at all. These kids don't know how to read, most of them, and they think it's just a YouTube video. Why, why would they pay attention to a YouTube video all day? So we need to learn to get comfortable with COVID in the world. It's not going away. And the H1N1 pandemic never shut down school for one day. Why are we letting it rule our world? We need to also remember there's an unseen consequence here. We have a We have a pre-K student as well without the possibility of getting that him to a pre-K program. Not because there aren't pre-K programs available, but because I'm tied to the computer with my first grader. I can't physically get our preschooler to the preschool education that is so essential so that he has the great start that our first grader had. So he's going to be left behind where his brother wasn't. You know, that shows a disparity that people are not talking about. The school we went to before, that's completely shut down because of this, the entire preschool because all the teachers were older and they were scared. But I say, let's stop being scared. Let's just get back to normal and mitigate the risk. If you really are still scared to death, ask for an online option or choose to homeschool your child. But I'm really glad it works for some people to do this online model. But for the bulk of everyone I've talked to, and that's been a lot of people, this is not working. And we shouldn't throw our kids to the wolves with their education and ruin their chance to win in the future because of the chance they might get sick. We need our essential workers.
Thank you, ma'am. I really appreciate your comment. Thank you.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Anthony Stats. I live at 9007 Claire Street. I am probably the only high schooler here today and that's pretty sad considering it's, um, our future you're deciding here. Let me just say, I'm, I'm utterly ashamed of you had months to come up with a plan and you had three plans. And none of them included a five-day learning plan. King George Cases are only 229. Virginia Beach is opening tomorrow and they have a way bigger population, uh, compared to ours. New studies are coming out saying that, um, students cannot easily transmit to their teachers. So this closing up the schools cannot work. I go to class. People are sleeping, no cameras are on, the teacher's preaching to no one. I mean, it's a shame what I'm seeing and it gets me angry because I want to learn. I want to talk to this, to, uh, to the teachers. I don't have that opportunity anymore. I feel like I'm being robbed of my childhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Yeah, this is, uh, Brendan Hager here and speaking on behalf of my seventh and second graders' education and wellbeing. First off, just want to express it's extremely frustrating as a parent that we're almost October and there's still no direction. At some point, someone needs to step up and make a leadership decision rather than kick the can down the road. I mean, when is that line to be drawn? With that, I fully understand the sensitivities and all the concerns and associated risks. But at some point, people need to adult up, put your big boy and girl pants on or find a different profession. Being an active duty member, I can't imagine if we shut down operations because we face risk. For healthcare professionals, thank God they answered the call. It's now time for our teachers and school administrators who are essential and want to be considered as such to make the necessary sacrifices and accept the risk to take care and educate our youth. Second, my high school that I graduated from down in, uh, southwestern Virginia, Grayson County High School, are currently in week six of their school year. They're, they're functioning on a five-day face-to-face with an option of virtual. To date, they have had three students test positive and two staff members test positive, all of which have fully recovered and are back in the school system. With that, yes, they, they share the same concerns with their plan as you guys are discussing right now. But the difference here is they place the education of the youth over their own fears and they're currently excelling. It's time for this school district to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, can anybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, um, so I wanted to speak, so I'm, I'm, my name is Haley Hudson. I live in Warment Drive Estates. Um, I have a daughter and a son. My daughter's in King George Middle School and then my son attends the preschool. Um, I am a hundred percent for the continuing of the virtual learning, um, a hundred percent for the second semester, for the second quarter. Um, my daughter this year, she has actually excelled virtually. Last year she was not doing very well in school and this year she has just made a complete turnaround. Um, I believe it's very helpful because she can turn around after the day's lesson and re-watch videos that the teachers have put up for her. If she has questions for projects and homework completion, she can look up things on the internet. She could re-watch the videos. Everything is there for her. If she has questions from her teacher, she sends them a chat or an email and they get back to her right away. So it actually has been super helpful for her. She still has a hundred percent, um, ability to speak with her teacher one-on-one, um, and in class as well. So it actually has been really helpful for her. Personally, I believe a lot of parents are just looking for, um, babysitters for their kids. And I don't think that's really the way to go right now. As a lot of people have mentioned, we're turning around and going right into, um, the holidays. We're going into Thanksgiving and Christmas and that's times where we see family, who are elderly and who have compromised immune systems. And the last thing I want to do is send my daughter to school and my son to school and then to turn around and, and even be asymptomatic with it and turn around and give it to her grandparents and that killed them. To me, that's just not, that's not a way to, to be just when we still have the ability to learn the way that they're learning and for her to excel in this. I feel like when she's in school, there's a lot of distractions and a lot of parents have talked about how their kids are socially falling behind. But for me, I don't send my daughter to school to socialize. She's there to learn and she's getting the learning from being virtual. I don't think I need to send her to school to socialize with her friends and hang out with her friends and then become distracted and her grades fall apart. So for me, but I also do believe for my son, he is in preschool and he actually is deaf. So for him, he has an IEP. And when it comes to virtual, he actually is in school in person two days a week. And for him, that does help a lot. Because the videos virtually for him, it doesn't do much. He doesn't get much from that other than the visualization. He needs one-on-one, he needs to be in face and in person with somebody to really understand and grasp what he's learning. So I believe that there's both, it could go both ways, but I am a hundred percent for the virtual learning and continuing him with his two days in person.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
No problem.
Let's, let's go in.
No, he's Mr. Vance's.
Like, why does it take?
No, if they, because sometimes it takes them a little while to get connected or for them to realize that they're in the next queue. So we've given them one minute between.
Right. Isn't that minute over?
I don't know.
So what if you went to the next person?
He can't do that now. Mr. Vance, is there still people waiting to give comment? 10?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, um, my name is Jessica Lewis and I have two kids. I have a kindergartner and a third grader. And I am a hundred percent five days a week. Before school had started, I spoke to the principal at Sealston Elementary School and she told me, and I asked her a question, were any of the live sessions are going to be recorded? And she specifically told me, um, yes, all the lives are going to be recorded. And then two days later, I received the email from both of my teacher, from both of my kids' teachers. And they told me none of their live sessions are going to be recorded. They said someone needs to be home with their youngest child. So I had to quit my day job to do virtually with my kids. So right now we are on a one-income base with my husband doing all the bills and everything. And I fully, I fully feel that the kids should be at like school five days a week. Because if you think about it, when they walk outside, they don't have a mask on when they go play with their friends outside. They go into Walmart and some of the people at Walmart, the employees there, they've got tested positive for COVID. Who from Amazon got tested positive for COVID. Everywhere you go, there's going to be a virus somewhere. This virus was, this virus here 70, 70 years ago and not once have anybody have heard of until now. I know a few CNAs that work at Mayor Washington Hospital. And I know a few nurses that work at Mayor Washington Hospital and one of my customers that I'm real cool with, they said that the nurse there told, told us that the government is paying them $3 billion for everyone to say that every patient that died is from COVID-19. That is ridiculous. I feel like this is the more political thing and I feel that all of our kids should be in school five days a week. Because yes, both of my kids are, their social skills have gone down. And for a five-year-old, the, the Sealston Elementary teacher stated that my son should be able to log in on a computer, having his date of birth, know where the tab button that and everything else. I feel like that is, that is not true. So yes, I fully agree that kids should be back to school five days a week. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me?
Hi, my name is Lauren Sealy. I work with students with disabilities in a self-contained setting at King George Elementary School. I became a teacher to make a difference in the lives of individuals and to bridge a gap between the special needs community and the general population. Over the years, however, I began to notice that my level of influence, my ability to advocate for my needs and that of my students was rarely heard or even sought when, when school decisions were made. This unfortunately is a common theme in the system of public, public education. This is my attempt to alert the school system, my rational apprehensions as a special education teacher concerning exposure to COVID-19. As I have already mentioned, I proudly work with children with disabilities. My students have no concept of spatial awareness nor understand potential virus contraction and haven't met physically face-to-face with their teachers since last March. They miss us just as much as we miss them. Especially they miss their friends. So it will be a struggle to enforce social distancing. Even with adult instruction and guidance, it will be merely impossible to ensure social distancing and enforce PPE with students with disabilities. Another factor is the needs of my students. Several of them require toileting or some other form of hygiene assistance. In other words, paraeducators or myself will continue to come in direct contact with these students on a regular basis, increasing the likelihood of COVID-19 exposure. Cleaning products and personal protective equipment are an essential tool to prevent the spread of the virus. However, classrooms don't have sufficient amounts of cleaning products, let alone enough disposable face masks to protect themselves from contracting the virus. We simply don't have, have enough PPE to prevent the, to prevent or reduce the spread of coronavirus. Not to mention the lack of comprehension of wearing masks is beyond the capability, the capability for my students and also extremely problematic for those with sensory challenges to wear masks for longer than 20 minutes, let alone an entire school day. King George Schools recently sent out surveys asking educators for their input regarding school reentry. I truly hope that we are being perceived as experienced, professional and valued members of the district and our input won't be minimalized by some political agenda, whether geared towards fear and/or money, but rather solely on the best interest of students and staff. Thus far, King Door Schools alone reported several cases. Our neighboring cities have even more. The current level of risk for reopenings shouldn't be a discussion when we are pondering the safety for children and staff. As you may already know, other school districts attempted to reopen only resulted in shutting down a few weeks later. Many educators have already pursued alternative careers at, at the mere possibility of returning, returning physically to schools. They remove themselves as a safeguard to protect the vulnerable children, colleagues and themselves because they believe the school board wouldn't do it for them. I can only foresee more staff following suit if the board approves returning to, to the traditional format. As you are contemplating the next step, please heed to all valid concerns and expertise for the well, for the welfare of the children and adults that are relying on you to decide on the behalf of all of us. I value my life just as much as others do. But some cannot speak for themselves. I am speaking on the behalf of the children with, with disabilities that cannot advocate for themselves. I don't envy your position, as I am sure it is difficult, but I wholeheartedly hope that the board decides to share those same values by postponing returning to schools. Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Um, hello, my name's Noah McGee. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, ma'am.
Okay, I would just like to point out one thing before I get into, um, my opinion on this whole matter. As grown adults that are sitting on a board, talking about, um, how children should be able to adapt, it would seem like a good idea for you to also have patience considering the connectivity for other people, since you're asking that of kindergarten through 12th graders. So to utter, well, isn't it been a minute yet? Just goes to show how frustrating this can be and now multiply it by who knows how much for little kids. Um, I'd also like to start off by talking about, um, one of Erickson's stages, growth and development. Um, for those of you who are in charge of a child well-being in any way, shape or form should be well-versed in it. Um, if you're talking about the school-aged child, the stages that they're going through are industry versus inferiority. And children need to cope, um, with new social and academic demands consistently. Success in this area will determine, you know, their competence later on. And if they fail in these areas, which many are with doing this online teaching, at least for a lot of the younger children, it's going to, uh, result in feelings of constant inferiority. Now, um, I understand, uh, that this is difficult for everyone and I absolutely sympathize with all the teachers. I actually think that they are doing a magnificent job, given what the tools they've been given. My concerns are, why were they not provided with appropriate training for using these platforms that they're using, um, from the beginning? As far as the platforms are concerned, why was there no instruction for there to be a uniform platform across the board for all students? So that for people like myself with children who are in multiple grades, I've got ones in third grade, one that's in fifth grade and one that's in eighth grade. Every one of them has a completely different plan for each day. Every one of them has a completely different plan for each day. As far as where you go for your assignments, for some instructors, it's we're going to assignments for it. For some, it's modules. For some, it's in a completely different format in Google Classroom and so on and so forth. This is going to make it more and more complicated for each child who is trying to excel at school. Myself, I am lucky to have three children who love school. As of this year, I have three children who can't stand the idea of starting school each day. One of my children, it's a daily thing for us to have a nervous breakdown and crying. I myself am a full-time student. I'm not using school as a daycare or babysitter like some people like to think. I previously was in the military and I gave up my military career so I wouldn't have to have babysitters. Now that my children are of school age, this is when I decided to pursue my education. So for people to assume that is, it's just absurd. Again, I understand that this is complicated for the teachers. And I think this falls back more on that there was no plan or contingency provided for them. And so if at all possible, going forward, if there is the opportunity for hybrid or for us to go back to full-time instruction, what are you going to provide the teachers with? If we have to stay online full-time, what training are you going to give them? And what incentive are you providing them with in order to do all the excess work that they are doing?
Mrs. McGee, I'm, I'm sorry, I have to interrupt you. Thank you very much for your comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Teresa Lunsford. I'm at 631B Hall Road. I actually have four children in school. I emailed all of you guys, so I won't go over all that. I just want to touch on some stuff. All my teenagers are here, fifth grade at Potomac, eighth grader, sophomore, and senior. They've all listened to everybody on this. And we all would like to see a continuation of 100% virtual. My kids are concerned about the virus. Yes, they know that they can't run away from it. But at this time, they're still leery and think that we should just wait this out, keep on our path until at least the end of the first semester. They don't want to go back and forth from virtual to in-person. Because when somebody does get sick, or you know, it's going to happen, we don't really know how the school's going to handle things. They like where they're at now. They finally have gotten used to what they're doing. My kids are thriving academically. They are thriving socially. I've asked them, you know, how do you thrive? You know, you're not with your, your classmates. Everyone of them FaceTime. We talk on the phone. We text. They don't seem to have an issue. I've watched my four-year-old maneuver my fifth grade's canvas better than my fifth grader. Yes, every student is different. At the beginning, and you've all read my emails, I hope, we had trials and meltdowns and we worked through it. I don't want to go through that again. They don't want to go through that again when we go to in-person. And then a month later, have to go back to virtual. The teachers have been amazing. I think if a lot more parents actually reach out to your teachers, I know a lot of us do and a lot of us don't. But if you reach out to them, they're more than accommodating. They've been, or at least for me and my family, have been very, very responsive to any advice I've given them on Canvas, any internet issues that we've had and we have and are continuing to have because of Atlantic Broadband's issues. So I mean, really, the kids, as much as they want to go back to school, they want to wait it out. They want to finish the semester out after Christmas, after the winter. They don't, they're worried about the flu. We get our flu shots. Not everybody in the county gets the flu shots. What's going to happen when you've got people in there and you can't decide whether they've got the flu or COVID? As far as numbers of all the schools that have had positive COVIDs, Dahlgren School on base, not two weeks ago, a child positive with COVID. So I mean, it's, it's going to happen.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is TJ Brant and I'm a fourth grade teacher in the county. I just want to say that I truly love my job and there is nothing I want more than my students to come back into the classroom with me. There's nothing equivalent to having them in the classroom with you and I get that. But however, health and safety is the most important thing at this very time. And virtual learning has had its ups and downs. However, I believe that a lot of us teachers are getting the hang of it. I think we've had ample enough time to practice it and get used to it. And I think it's, it's going well as of late. However, and I completely, I completely understand parents' concerns and their issues with having students at home. And the only thing I have to say is, is my health, my students' health, my family's health, my friends' health should not have to take a backseat to this issue of virtual learning. And many of us were not given the chance to be all virtual teachers. And as I said, the safety and health of my family and my friends and myself are just as important as anyone else's. And I have a lot of concerns about the blended model. If we were to do that, I'm concerned about the pacing. I am concerned that my students would basically be getting half of the learning that they are now, just to get in-person, which to me, it just seems silly. It's, that's just not enough. It would be cutting their instruction in half where as of right now, they're getting four days of learning. They're getting to see me face-to-face. And I see several teachers like myself, we're departmentalized. That means instead of seeing just 24 kids or 20 kids in a day, we're seeing about 60. And that's exposing our, just our homerooms or another class to another 40-some kids that have potentially been exposed to a virus. I truly believe that in-person learning would, would open a whole new level of exposure for the county. I think that especially with the top national scientists telling us that there, there's most likely going to be an increase in the fall and in the winter, that it would be, it would be reckless to open up the school buildings for in-person learning at this time. And I keep seeing a lot of, I keep hearing a lot of people giving the argument that we go to stores and we go to restaurants and we, and we go to the malls. And that is nowhere near the same thing as being in a room, in a classroom of 20 kids all day long, where you're just together and you're talking to each other. You're in the same room stuck all day long. You are in a store, you are passing by each other, you're not near each other for a consistent eight hours in a day. I, I truly think that a lot of, the virtual learning is going to be considered illness for the longest time. However, it's providing a safe way for us to teach our students, give them the opportunity to learn. And it prevents families and friends and students in our county from getting sick. And I think that's the most important thing right now.
We, we understand. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Matthew McKinley. I live in 8280 Mamie's Place. And I have two daughters that go to Potomac Elementary in third and sixth grade. And I wanted to say, first thing, they've taken rather well to virtual learning. They're doing pretty well in their classes when they remember to turn their assignments in. And I just want to thank all the teachers that are working so hard to try to make, to make something out of this educational experience. My kids want to go back to school as much as anyone's kids. They do miss their friends, though my, my older one tends to talk on the phone a little bit much with them. But they also understand that going back to school is not going to be the same experience that they think it's going to be. Had to talk, had sat down with my younger daughter to say, you know, you're not going to be able to sit next to your friend. You're not going to be able to hug your friends. You're not going to be able to really interact that much with your friends at school. And she understands that. We're not going to a normal situation. We're in the middle of a global pandemic and I think people need to understand that, that there's nothing normal about the situation. And this shouldn't, there, there is no going back to normal at this time. I think my kids are going to be happy staying with the virtual option for now. And I appreciate and thank your support. I thank the, thank the work that the school board is doing to keep that option for us.
Thank you. Yes, we can hear you.
All right, cool. Thank you so much. My name is Thomas Britt. I'm a teacher at King George High School. First of all, to say, I appreciate everybody giving input. It is so good to hear so many people come out and respond to this. We, as teachers in the science department, we actually came together and we decided to step away and actually think of it as a third-party situation and just focus on what our kids are. So we've seen a lot of improvement from our students as the four weeks have actually gone. We've seen that some kids have actually stepped up to the challenge specifically at the high school level and taken advantage of their own learning and taking control of their learning. But we do have some concerns that might come about when actually coming back to a hybrid schedule. A lot of us teachers actually just don't teach one prep, which means we just don't teach one specific class. We might teach three or three different classes in one day. So by splitting that up, you have now basically taken three classes and you have basically split them into two sections, technically three. So now we're teaching nine sections per class. We also have a few things about logistics. It would be great to interact with our students. I can't wait to have students back into the classroom. But what we're doing now is we have limited contacts. So I can't actually be near a student, lead them to a discussion in science. I can't actually hand them materials. I can't accept materials back. I can't do lab work with them. I can't let them do any lab stations without cleaning everything properly before each new class. So that limits our interaction. So basically, the students would be coming into my classroom, opening up their Chromebooks or their computer and doing exactly what they're doing now until we can come back to a model where we could have complete interaction. Other things are, if you've ever had a child before and you know this child, they can be absent-minded. What if they leave their Chromebook at home one day? What if they leave their power cord? What if they leave all their other stuff that they need? Well, guess what? The high school has already given away a lot of our Chromebooks to this community for the students to use. So are there, we going to have enough Chromebooks at the high school if students leave them or forget them? Well, power cords to where they can use them in our classrooms. Other things are monitoring a student while they're on a Chromebook and also teaching at the same time all through an online structure. If you've ever done that in a classroom, you know, when you're looking at a computer screen, let alone two computer screens, and trying to monitor 13 or 14 other computer screens at one time, it, it's a little atrocious. It gets pretty hard to do. Also, if we go to this hybrid model, I'm afraid that I'm going to cut more curriculum out of my teaching. I teach an SOL course, which means that I teach to a test that I don't even know what's going to be on. So I have to cut material I think might be on the test, not on the test. I have limited test prep time for in-between things. And plus, when students come back, our plannings might get cut short because of duties. Like monitoring bathrooms, hallways, plus taking breaks to clean stuff during classes. I'll be cleaning those, not paying attention to students in the hallway, making them have a social distancing. I have like 30, 40 more things. I'm out of time. I'm not going to talk about the virus. You can get your own research on that. But there are some concerns about what we would do as teachers at the high school level. Far as how can we interact and be safe in doing it? How can we have a full planning and how can we do all this and still maintain going to this hybrid?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Vance, how many more do we have waiting in queue?
Hi, my name is Miriam Neme. I live at 956 Barbara's Way. I wanted to express my appreciation to all the teachers who work so hard to get virtual learning going. I wanted to express tonight my concerns for our most at-risk learners who have special education, are special education students who have 504s and IEPs. I have two students in the elementary level that fall into this category. And Canvas is simply not designed for these students. As expressed earlier by a parent, cognitive overload is happening. They're not able to process all this. It's caused an incredible amount of stress in our family. The online platforms are not designed for students with special needs. They have to click too many times to find classes and assignments. They're also not able to get the support that they need to be successful and are falling further behind their peers. We need to address not only the youngest learners who are struggling, but also our special education learners who need to be, you know, in a classroom where possible. Or we need, if we're going to continue in a virtual mode, we need to change the method of delivery and expectation for these 504 and IEP learners. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Sorry for the technical issues, but. Hi, my name's Anthony Means. I reside at 7502 Bowie Road. I am a senior at King George High School. I'm a KG DECA officer. My compliments go to the district for everything they have done to make virtual learning work. Unfortunately, it's an everyday struggle. Based on opinions from myself and my peers, virtual learning has been problematic in multiple ways. This includes eye strain, failure to concentrate, technology issues, and lack of collaboration. Us as students should not have to fear that we may not be able to log into our first block. Some people's grades in certain courses have tanked because they weren't able to get assignment done at one time. I endorse the blended model personally because we still need to be able to allow students into the building. For example, a SAT test or the SOL test. You can't frock your kids at home for a test like that. So I thank you, everyone, for all your efforts, but I am personally for the blended model. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, I'm Lisa Perkey. I have three kids in the school system, third grade, seventh grade, and 11th grade. I do want to thank you guys because it's honestly going a little bit better than I expected it to go. But my junior in high school has some concerns that she would like to share.
Hi, my name's Haley Smith. And I just wanted to say that me and all of my younger siblings are severely struggling with the virtual learning. With me specifically and a lot of the high school students I've talked to, there's been the same amount of work assigned by all of our teachers as in regular school, but no time in class to do this work like we would get in regular schools. So this has resulted in me being on my computer from 7:30 in the morning to midnight some days. And it is exhausting. And it's not something that I or any of my friends can continue. I am also a governor's school student, so I am taking a very heavy course load of college classes, honors classes, all very difficult classes, even in person. all very difficult classes, even in person. So doing them virtually is almost impossible, especially when this is not organized to be virtual. I am definitely in favor of doing blended, at least blended, going back to school because I, I can, I myself cannot, cannot sustain this virtual learning. And I know my sisters, who are all younger than me, are very much struggling with this. They have all had very limited interaction with other students and are honestly very depressed being by themselves right now. And it is extremely difficult for them, with the youngest one being eight years old, who has seen about two of her friends since this started, very rarely. And it is causing a very big deficit in her social interaction and causing it, social anxiety that will stick with her for her whole life probably because this is such a developmental age for her. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name's Melissa Phipps. Um, we have five kids, three currently in the school system, a preschooler, a middle schooler, and a high schooler. I would like to say that my middle schooler and high schooler are great students. They've always loved school. And yes, they are doing pretty well at virtual. Based on the last young lady who spoke, my high schooler is on the computer for like twelve hours a day. She's very dedicated, and that's great, but it's just not right. She's missing out on a lot. And my middle schooler, on the other hand, is getting about two hours of actual instruction a day. So either way, whether you're on there for twelve hours or two hours, you're not getting what you should be getting for a good education. I know a lot of families and students and teachers who want to be back in school in person five days a week, and they understand the risk and realize that the benefits of in-person education outweighs those risks. Why can't we have a model that allows teachers and students to go back in the classroom five days a week? And those teachers and students who want to stay virtual, to stay virtual. It's not fair that we are all paying taxpayer money and care about the education of our children, but we are not getting equally heard. Those who have comorbidities or are higher risk seem to get preference for the way things are going, and this is a small percentage of people. So I just don't think it's fair. Everybody understands that when they go back to school, they may get COVID, and they may get sick, and that's okay because they will heal and recover. And they may bring it home to the people and that they love, and they will also heal and recover. For those who may have high-risk people at home, they should not come back to school. They should stay home. But don't hold us responsible for the situ, for that situation and do not take away our kids' valuable education and valuable friendships and social life, teacher relationships, role models, extracurricular activities, clubs, all of the things that make our memories the greatest thing about school. Our kids are missing out, and our kids are being mentally and emotionally affected terribly, not to mention their education is suffering, and we all realize that. I just don't think the risk of COVID outweighed the benefits of part, in-person school. So we need to get our kids back in school. As a school board, you are responsible to figure it out. So please petition for more money, market those bus needs, get more people to apply for teacher positions, helping out if we need to have more teachers in person and also virtually. Get things in place now. We've got to get them back. And COVID's not going anywhere. It's not going to get better. So we need to figure out a plan now for virtual and five days a week in person. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um, my name is Amber Kins, and I live at 14368 Chastain Drive in King George. My stepdaughter, Arwen, is a freshman at KGHS. I have a degree in chemistry, and I've subbed at KGEs as well as KGHS. I believe that criteria need to be established for what safe looks like. We then need a roadmap for how we can arrive at that safe situation. We also need to know exactly what the school day will look like once in-person instruction begins. I apologize for my toddler background. I would love to see all of the students back in school, but I would like to see the students back in pre-COVID school. I know that's po, not possible right now, which is why my family supports the fully virtual option. My toddler and I are high-risk. I think for people in similar situations to ours, part or full-time in-person instruction in an unsafe situation would drastically change how families like ours interact with our children. I believe that KGCS teachers do an amazing job reaching their students. They try to teach content in as many ways as possible. Even before COVID, some students didn't respond to ways teachers taught. So it's no surprise that some students respond well to virtual learning and others don't. I don't believe student response to virtual learning should impact the decisions made. If the problem is inability or ability to use platform, the platform should be adjusted. I believe that the school board should listen to the large number of staff that would be less than fully comfortable with having students in the school. I believe that cutting virtual, cutting in-person virtual instruction in half by doing a hybrid instruction model would be very detrimental to every student. I've seen several parents comment on Facebook that they look at Wednesdays as days to schedule doctor or dental appointments. I believe that moving back and forth between virtual and physical instruction would be detrimental to our students and staff instead of, and rather than remaining virtual until the criteria indicate that it's safe to return. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my comment and all of these comments, as I know there have been so many. I'm sure that the decisions you all may have to make are difficult, and I appreciate the careful consideration you give to them.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Melissa Lamb, and I live at 14322 Milbank Road. I just want to say, I know that it's a hard decision for everybody, and every family is different, and every student is different. My household, I have a freshman in high school, and I have two kids in second and third grade at King George Elementary School. I am working on one bar of internet with three kids. They are constantly getting on and off all day long. Uh, my high schooler is actually a great student, and he doesn't mind this whole virtual thing. It's great. But my two younger kids have IEPs, and they have totally different needs. And I am sitting at the table with them from the time they have to log on at eight-fifty-five until two-thirty or three o'clock in the afternoon. And that's not counting the homework that's assigned for after-school hours. So it is not working in my family as it would in some months, some others. I personally, due to health problems, I cannot send my third grader to school because of his health conditions right now. But I am willing to send my other two kids to school. I'm even willing to drive them to school. I quit my job with the county as a preschool paraprofessional so I could be home and help with my kids. It has been hard on our family, and I know it has been hard on many other families. I just hope that there's a plan in place where we can either do all virtual or, or make the decision for the families that they could do virtual or they could do in-school. I am not a fan of the blended model to knocking my kids that I have to keep, stay home or go to school, that they'd only see their teacher twice a week versus right now, they at least be, um, four times a week. So I do not like the blended model, but the options that were given from my family isn't a good one. So I appreciate all that y'all have done and the stats and everything, but I just hope that you take everybody's comments and considerations to heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for your comments. Now we can move on. Let's see. Next item is discussion items, work sessions. Do we want to discuss the comments?
We were in school reopening.
We are, well, we already discussed that, and then we got the public comments. So now the next in line is the discussion items.
So what are we going to do? Going to kick it down the road again?
I think we.
Do you want to discuss?
Well, I, I think Mr. Collins has corrected. The order of things has been a little different because we changed things, but if we move on to address the agenda, then we're leaving behind.
Well, I think that's why we, that's part of the work session is to discuss, discussing that during the work session.
Well, I'd like to make a. Have a new work session, or are we going to talk about having a work session? Because.
Okay. Mr. Collins would like to make a motion.
Make a motion to open the schools five days a week?
Do we have a second? I think that it's a great idea to do that, and I would like to see how that would look. And that's why I would like to see us have a work session as soon as possible so that we could discuss how that might happen.
So let's go second?
No second.
So it failed. I'd like to make a motion to open schools four days a week.
That is option three. Is that what you mean?
For, for K two.
For K through two.
So option three for K.
Not for K two, for all schools.
Oh, okay.
No second?
No.
I think we need a plan. We need to know how that looks before we can come up with something.
So how many kids can we get in school?
We have an option three that brings K through two in for four days a week.
Or half days.
Four half days.
So how many, how many kids is that?
As many as choose to take that option. We don't know that anymore.
Well, how many kids are there in that range?
Some don't, some may stay virtual.
Well, I understand that.
He's asking Dr. Benson.
Asking a question.
Well, that's why I think we need to have a work session so that we can ask Dr. Benson to come up with a plan to see what it would take in order to get kids back to school four or five days a week and then have that in a work session so we can discuss it.
So I think having a work session is a great idea.
Is that a motion?
So is, Dr. Benson, you had to answer that question.
That's why we're going to, the discussion item is a work session, right, Ms. Valens? Yes, sir.
You can give us some, Dr. Benson, give us.
I think just, just to go back before we. So the question was, how many students can we, how many, what is the question?
How many kids can we get back in school?
Okay, so getting back into school.
How many kids can we transport?
I don't know that we can come up with that until we.
If that's the question, I can give you the answer to that.
Questions answered. So we have parents that are willing to.
Let Dr. Benson answer.
It would require forty, a little over forty-three buses, transport if, if one hundred percent of kindergarten through second grade were returned to school.
We're not going to hundred percent. We're talking about.
That was just your question.
An option.
I was just answering a question.
Hundred percent of the kids.
Right.
If all K two came back, it would take forty buses.
Forty-three point three five, a little bit more than forty-three buses.
Forty-four buses.
Forty-three and a half.
Again, I want to remind the board that that's at one per seat. So you're really, your question is going to come down to.
There's a, there's, there's a lot of little pieces involved here. That's why we need to have a work session so that we can outline the pieces. Like, are we going to put one person per seat on a bus? You know, if we do, then we're going to, are we going to ask a hundred percent to come back? Are we going to give the option of virtual? You know, we can sit here and talk about this all day long and go back and forth, but we need to sit down and figure out what our options are and what we want Dr. Benson to look at.
No, no, we're past that. We, we.
We are not.
Can I try to clarify? I think there's two different things going on right now.
Right.
We need a work session, and I think we're possibly in agreement that come January, we need to look at four or five days or whatever way we're going to bring kids back in person. I think we need a decision tonight regarding what's going to happen in the next couple of weeks because people can't wait another week for us to decide to have a work session and answer questions. So, so I think what I'm, we need a motion. We had two motions that failed for five days and four days. We have an option on the table for K to two to come back, whether they choose a hundred percent of them to come back or half of them to come back or whatever numbers. We can accommodate that at this time. So I think there's two different things going on. Future plan discussion and tonight's plan discussion.
But why, why can't we have a work session so that we can discuss, so that we can possibly have the four or five days option come October fifteenth, nineteenth?
I don't think, we have three weeks, and I don't think that's possible to happen.
Well, that's what Dr. Benson would be able to answer because we could have a work session as, as soon as Friday. Is that correct?
We can't have all our questions answered by.
Well, that's what we don't know.
You talking about K two or you talking about the whole division?
Just what, what are the options of? We're not going to bring back the entire division.
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
We're, we're having the option of bringing the division back. What does that look like?
Now or in January?
I don't know why we can't. That's, that's the question. Dr. Benson, is it possible that your staff could get something together that we could possibly discuss at a work session on Friday? Is if, if we, how many students and what it would look like? The beginnings of what it would look like if we had a work session on Friday?
For all grade levels, you're asking for what, what would, make sure I understand what you're asking for then. If, if all students who chose, I guess there'd be some need to put out a new context to see, to re-gauge how many students would choose a five-day-a-week in-person instruction. I guess that's the first data point that we would need. I don't know if we could gather that by Friday.
So what you're asking for is five days?
No more surveys.
A week.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure I'm clear on what your question is.
So, okay, so we can have a. So I, how long would it take your staff to determine what it would take for us to get back to have, to offer an option of a four- or five-day in, in-school education?
Well, I could almost tell you that now.
Okay.
I mean, you would have to be willing to relax. Any, any physical distancing or social distancing recommendations, you would have to be able to relax. Any distancing as far as school transportation. That really is, are the two factors that would come down to it. I think you heard public comment tonight that at the elementary level, the proposal, the option three that's out there certainly is going to place a larger amount of time for planning on our K-two teachers. That, that model, that four-day-a-week offering both the in-person and the virtual could be doable at that elementary level. I think that you heard public speaker tonight talk about the. I don't know if it's possible, quite frankly, to set up a camera in a classroom and broadcast a half a class and teach live to another half.
I, I think there's more options than that.
I think there, there are issues with the number of sections at the middle and the high school where it, it would be, it would be more involved than we could put together by Friday to establish kind of a schedule or a master schedule at each of those levels. If that's what you're asking, I may not be understanding what you're asking.
No, I'm just, I'm asking for the feasibility of it. And obviously, I, I don't think that all of the teachers can't. Can I speak to, please, Mrs. Hawk, let me speak, okay? So I don't think that the teachers, they've made it clear that they're not going to be able to teach virtually and in-class at the same time. But in the middle school and the high school, they have classes where they could teach one class, one period, all virtual, and another period all in, in-school, if that would be an option. So there's, there's things, that's what I'm saying, is that there. There's options out there and what.
I'm tracking with what you're saying. That's where I'm getting at, is that to look at that as a possibility, we'd have to build that master schedule.
Correct.
So we'd have to look at staffing at each of those sites and see, is that even feasible? Do the numbers, you know, fall out that neatly that you could simply move one section to be virtual, one section to be non-virtual? My, my off-the-cuff answer is that it wouldn't fall out as neatly as that. So we'd really have to build a master schedule to look at whether we have the staffing or to what extent we would have staffing enough to cover that kind of idea.
So then essentially what you're saying, in order to give the option for us to have the K through twelve to come back on a four- or five-day is more than likely not going to happen by October nineteenth.
You talking K through twelve or K through two?
I'm talking K through twelve.
Okay, because a couple times.
Right. I know, I'm sorry.
Just clarify. That's fine, that's fine.
That's, so it's not feasible for your staff to be able to, to get that model up and running and through by October fifteenth, nineteenth?
No, I didn't say that at all. You asked about a work session Friday.
Yes.
And we would need to build that, to answer questions Friday, we would need to build that master schedule before Friday.
And I don't think that's possible.
Before that.
No, so the work session would identify what things need to be done. Either it's a survey or it's scheduling or whatever.
I, I, I mean, I see that as staff work and work with principals as far as master scheduling. I don't see that as necessarily a board building a master schedule or looking at the, at the elements that would have to go into.
Getting that information to get, so us identifying what information we feel is needed or would be required. I think we all have a little bit of ideas after what we've heard tonight of what needs to be done. So if we had a work session on Friday and we started to discuss the things that. So if we had a work session on Friday and we started to discuss the things that might be needed in order to bring everybody back to five days or four days, K through twelve, not all at once, but having that option.
Certainly willing to, to engage in a work session for that purpose. I do think that the October nineteenth date, then you would need to address that you couldn't expect then to turn around from Friday.
Right. So that's what I'm saying. I'm, I'm probably talking two different things here. Like, I think we need a work session as soon as possible so that we can see what the option would be is bringing people back, kids back from K through twelve. At the same time, I'm saying I don't think that we're gonna have the timeframe in order to do all of that in order to start October nineteenth. So I'm kind of saying two things here. Sorry, I'm all over.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to clarify. So.
So that's what I'm clarifying.
I think we agree that we need discussions that need to happen soon, that need to happen frequently in order to make a plan for January to bring kids back four or five days a week. I think in the meantime.
Why, why is January the date?
Well, February, March, April, I don't know what's the date. You know, people keep saying, what's the end game? What's it gonna take? What are the, what are the criteria? We don't know that because nobody knows.
So, so can we get the buses rolling?
Because you want nine weeks because you want teachers to have a clean break. Did your teachers want a clean break and.
Can we get the buses rolling, put some kids in school and then.
Do we have a motion to, to go with option three? Do we have an opt, do we have a motion to go with option three? That gets us the beginning of getting kids back.
Can we get more kids than, than option three?
But, but I want to clarify one other thing because when we started school a couple of weeks later than was originally planned, the nine weeks is not the nineteenth. The nine weeks ends the twenty-sixth or the, somebody who's a teacher help me, the first week in November. So if we want to keep that clean, we need to keep those nine weeks clean. The nineteenth is prior to the end of the first nine weeks. So is it October twenty-sixth or is it November second? Of the start of the second nine weeks. Ms. Richard, can you help me out?
And that's, that's something where that we can discuss in.
Not if we have a motion and we're gonna make a decision.
Okay, well, October nineteenth is what we discussed before, that we're gonna do the virtual learning through October nineteenth.
We approved the calendar based on starting school August tenth, and we did not start school August tenth.
Correct.
I would assume, and I could be wrong, that staff would want not somebody jumping in the building in the eighth week and not the ninth week. Unless K through two, that doesn't matter, and maybe it doesn't. I don't know. Dr. Benson, do you have a thought on that?
Just to clarify that, I do believe that October date was identified because that was at the time the end of that first marking period. So we did start later than we anticipated, so it does push the end of the marking period, so to speak, back.
Is that, is that an issue with kindergarten, first, second grade? I don't know.
Or is it that we would make the change at the marking period? I was assuming we'd make it at the marking period.
Which is not the nineteenth. That's, that's what I'm trying to clarify. It's the twenty-sixth or the.
Twenty-ninth or something.
Twenty-ninth or something? So what's the end of the first nine weeks? October twenty-sixth? Yeah, about a week before. I just want to make it clean for, for staff, people.
So Madam Chair, can I, I'd like to make another motion.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to bring back K through sixth grade by October nineteenth.
Change it to the, to the twenty-sixth.
You can change it to whatever you want.
Mark period?
Is it not a second?
No.
Make it the marking period.
No, he said six, you're not.
He said six.
He said six.
K through six, October nineteenth.
So I think at some point we need to, we need to stop with the knee-jerk reactions to trying to get, to, to, to making an immediate decision to bring kids back to school. I think everyone in this room agrees, maybe not on much, but on one thing, that, that we all want our kids back in school like that, of course. Of course, that is what we all want our lives back. We all want, we wish this COVID thing would have just never showed up. We want kids back in school. But we are where we are. It has taken a lot of time to get the virtual instruction up and running, which I think regard, I've been sitting here thinking, listening to the, the ups and the pros and cons for, you know, virtual learning for some students and how it does work and it doesn't work. And I'm thinking long-term, like past COVID, whenever the heck that is, that maybe that's an interesting case study on how schooling works for kids, and maybe, maybe school should be more flexible in the future. So I'm just like thinking outside the box, right? But all of that, all of that said, like, we've done, there's been a lot of work, Dr. Benson and, and staff and teachers and administrators and bus drivers, and everyone has put in a lot of work to get us where we are, to just, to just kind of throw that up in the air and say, oh, well, we, oh, everybody, we need to get back to five days, five days a week. Like, it's not reasonable to make a major course correction in the middle of all this, right? So to this point in time, we've had blended, and it's taken us sometime, as an option, it's taken us some time to realize that, that, you know what? Reality says that that might not really work that well. And I associate very strongly with Ms. Marilla's comment about the project management, risk management piece of things because you have to have, the roadmap was a great word, so thank you for bringing that one up, the plan to get there. We can't just say today, oh, well, we're gonna vote, we're gonna, like, I, I don't think that makes any sense. I think that is just throwing caution to the wind to try to get an answer. Yes, we want answers, and yes, we would like answers yesterday, but we have to do it in a smart way. I think a work session is a great idea. I think perhaps a phased approach would maybe be a good compromise. K, I'm interested in the K to two option. Maybe that is what works. Maybe that's, that's our, the, the folks that are struggling, you know? There's a lot that needs to be addressed, right? Here, there's like struggles with students that have the five of fours and the IEPs. And you know, okay, so maybe there's some adjustments that can be made there. The challenges associated that we've heard from the beginning about the inconsistency across learning platforms, okay, we can make adjustments. But why don't we focus on where we are and how we get to the end game and do it wisely? So what if we had a work session to discuss the options that are in front of us because that's where the time has been spent, spent today? So we've learned blended might not work, but maybe K through two, bringing them back, maybe that's a smart first step at some point. So what if we have a work session and we bring folks in who have a say, our stakeholders, maybe administrators, department chairs, grade level chairs, I don't know, feedback that we can get on the K through two option? And do that sooner rather than later, obviously, like next Monday, something like that. And, and, and get that information so that we can make a decision as soon as possible what our next step is. And maybe that's, maybe that's bringing K through two back at the end of the first quarter, or maybe that is continuing virtual so we don't interrupt what we've accomplished and.
Well, we, we've got the plan to bring K through two back, so that's why I'm saying we need to have a little bit more information so we can see if we want to broaden that a little bit more. So having that work session, getting that information back from Dr. Benson and staff to see if, if we just keep it at the K through two, the two days or the half-days, or if we can expand it. I think that's.
So I wasn't.
All in favor of a work session to look at planning, but I think we need a decision tonight for something.
Well, I think we need. I'd like to weigh in also. I, I have frequently been one who has done the micromanagement. But in this case, I think we as a board are doing micromanagement. We have Dr. Benson and a staff who have worked their, uh, some, themselves to death. And they have come up with options. We've heard a lot of reasons tonight why some aren't good and some aren't great. And that there's not going to be a perfect option. Um, I, I think, I, I mean, agreeing with, with Ms. Tolliver that we need to do both. We, we need to, uh, we need to listen to the options that Dr. Benson has put on the table for us. His staff has worked really hard to do that. We're, we're not needing to, to come up with new options tonight. I, I think what we do need is, uh, I, I think they have the roadmap. What I'm hearing is that the roadmap needs to be clarified and publicized so that we have community buy-in as much as we can. I guess I'm gonna make a motion that we schedule a work session and, as soon as possible, and approve option three.
That's two parts. Do you want to?
Yeah, that is two parts. Should I?
I don't know that we need a motion to have a work session. Of course, I guess we're in a discussion of having a work session, right?
I would second a motion to approve option three, but I think we need a specific date, and I believe since October twenty-ninth is the end of the first nine weeks, that's a Thursday. Then we move that start date to that Monday, November second. That's agreeable. I think a Thursday is a weird day to start.
Or making a motion to vote on that right now?
I'm making a motion to have the work session and to implement option three at the most appropriate time.
Yeah.
That Dr. Benson's staff can give us, the end of the first nine.
Perhaps.
I think we need to separate it out. Make a motion for option three, we don't need a, a motion for a work session.
Okay.
That's another discussion item which we're actually doing now.
Okay. All right. I'll make a motion that we implement option three at the appropriate time that Dr. Benson's staff gives us as soon as possible.
So you need an end date on that.
Yeah, end date.
Let's start the first nine weeks, whatever you deem appropriate.
November second. November second.
I second that motion.
Oh, wait, say this again.
Okay. I, I move that we, um, implement.
Okay, so the motion, all right, so the, so all right, there's our discussion. The motion is that we implement option three, starting on the, the first day of the next quarter. Second nine weeks. That is the motion.
November second.
November second.
Which is sending back K one to four half-days a week, and those who choose to stay virtual will get that virtual learning, yeah, second half of those four days. So they will go and they will have learning in the morning and lunch, and then they will go home, and then teachers will virtually teach the second half of the day, four days a week. I'm just clarifying the plan.
Any discussion, Mr. Collins? Do you have any? I personally would think that it'd be best that we wait to see if, what option four could be having more students in school or more days.
That's pushing it down.
We're kicking the can down the road.
I don't think we're kicking the can down the road. I mean, we have till November second now, so, I mean, we're, we're talking until Friday, if that's possible.
Friday, if everybody's available for a work session, which could be seven hours long and no decision could come out of it. So I agree, we need to increase the numbers when we can, but I feel like tonight we need to make a plan to at least start somewhere. And there's a motion and second on the table, so.
So I, before we can vote, I think we need feedback from K through two teachers on buy-in from that. Well, that.
So you have a motion on the table?
We have a motion. Is there a second? Okay. Discussion.
I don't have any further discussion.
All right, so we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
What?
I will say.
Bring nobody back or.
Yes. Yeah, get your vote, please.
Okay, thank you. I say yea, but let's, we need, uh, I'm not gonna do an amendment, but we need to start scheduling the next group to come after that.
We've, yeah, we're gonna schedule a work session to discuss.
Mine is yes.
Okay.
All right.
So that's three votes.
Chair votes nay, motion's carried. So we will begin option three. Yeah, she said nay.
Okay.
I said nay.
Option three, and then we, option three will be appro, has been approved to begin November second, which is bringing K through two back to school, half-days, two sessions, morning and afternoon. Two sessions a day for four days.
It is, option three is to accommodate those who choose to come back for the morning.
To choose, yes.
Those who choose to remain virtual receive their instruction instead of the morning and the afternoon.
Correct.
That is option three.
Okay, got you. Okay, so do we want to schedule, we don't talk about the work session?
Yes.
So what are we discussing in this work session?
We're discussing when we're gonna schedule this work session and what will we talk, discussing at the work session. If Dr. We are wanting Dr. Benson to bring any additional information to us at this work session or not.
The, the purpose of the work session is to what?
Begin to plan the roadmap for reopening.
Okay.
That's what I'm.
Yes.
I'm ready, I can do it tomorrow.
Right. Do we have to have three days, Ms.? We have to have three days. So we would post it tomorrow so we couldn't do it any earlier than Thursday or Friday? Friday?
So can we do Thursday?
No, I'd rather not.
Friday.
Can we maybe by email pick a couple of dates that might work in the next week for everybody rather than try to decide by now?
Yes, that's a good idea. I don't know what I'm doing on Friday. I, I, I know that I have a problem.
Okay.
Or like Monday.
Monday.
Do Mondays.
Monday. Monday is available.
Monday, good.
Monday. All right, so let's schedule it for Monday.
Do we got to figure out?
Six o'clock here.
Six o'clock?
Well, we can do it earlier.
We can do it earlier.
Can anybody do, can everybody do it earlier?
Yes.
Can we do it at five?
Yes.
Do five.
Okay, so.
Four if you want.
We can do four if you want. We do that early.
Let's do five.
Five, five o'clock on Monday?
Five o'clock.
Mr. Collins is bringing dinner.
We can do it here, but I'd like for us to set the tables up so we're not doing this the whole time.
I want to make sure I'm six feet away from all y'all.
We can be six feet away, and we might have, and Mr. Collins, you don't have to have your back to the audience.
We could do a treat table, like in a super.
Like we did with the four supervisors. And you.
I'll wear my sweater.
All right, how about we figure out the date and move on with the agenda? Late in the evening.
Okay. All right, so we've gone to the, through the discussion item. We can move on to the action items.
I'd like to make a, a motion to approve the action items as posted.
Second, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Action items have been approved as noted. All right, so we go down to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Just one quick announcement that annually I'm obligated to announce to our public and our community that the location of the school board policy manuals, all of our policies in the schools division are available online. They are also available in hard copy for reference at any of our school sites or the local Smoot Library. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to board comments. Mr. Collins?
I think.
Ms. Hawk?
Yes, and, and I agree with you. I'll, I'll be very succinct. My, my apology for any outburst, as you can tell, I, I'm, I, I am always passionate. Sometimes I speak before I think and.
Did you have an outburst?
I want to acknowledge frustration for everybody in this room, in the county, the staff. It, it is an impossible situation. You know, I, I've read accounts of the, the nineteen-seventeen flu, and, and they went through this impossible situation, but they didn't have technology. They didn't, they didn't have telephones. I mean, it, it's a different world, and yes, folks lived through it, but, but lots didn't. And that by way of saying, if we can, if we can be patient and kind to each other, then that's the best way to get through it. I, I will say at this point, and this is really, really important, that everybody has a role to play in getting children back to school. Whether it's K two or K twelve, if you are not wearing a mask in public, if you are attending large group crowds, then that's not helping to mitigate or contain any virus, whether the flu or COVID. If you want our children to go back to school at any point in time, we have got to mitigate the spread of any virus and especially this very serious COVID virus. And I want to thank the one student who was present tonight and, and the one student who came online. And I have gotten a, a few emails from students. I would appreciate hearing from more students. I truly would. Whether you, whether it's a kindergarten student that you can help type or seniors in high school, we need to hear from students. Thank you.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Uh, yes, thank you. So I think, um, thank you for everyone for coming this evening and making comments and sending us emails. There are a lot of emails. Um, I do, I do, my intent is to reply to all of them. It takes time, but thank you for everyone's patience. Obviously, your emotions run high on all of these topics. A question, I guess, well, um, as we discuss the work session, I don't know if we can discuss the content of the work session, if we could consider involving K through two teachers to at least be involved with the planning. And so just two, two notes. I attended virtually, in a webinar that was the V S B A Legislative Advocacy Meeting on Thursday last week, which was a number of hours on, well, not on Zoom, but on, anyway, the webinar. And it had a number of interesting items, I think especially pertinent to where we are right now with COVID and, you know, virtual. tell, you know, virtual learning, that sort of stuff. One was that the, so the Virginia State Assembly, so in January, they're going to be reviewing the potential to allow districts to use the pre-COVID ADM numbers for for for, I guess, for next year, which, you know, for this year. So I thought that was, anyway, that's good news, something that would be discussed. And then another interesting thing, there are a speaker they had who, she was really great, FCC Commissioner Rosen Worsell, I forget her first name, she was one of five commissioners on the, on the, on the board or the commissioner, I suppose. And she she gave a this chat discussing, addressing the technology homework gap. Based, she's, I I have, I know, I'm interested in looking into more of her speeches and that sort of things. But anyway, she's done some research and and evidence, you know, her research shows that seven out of ten teachers assign homework online in this day and age. I think we probably don't, aren't not that surprised by that. But that at the same time, it's found that one in three homes don't have internet. So clearly, there's a disparity there with kids that can't access homework. And I thought it was, obviously, it's applicable right now with virtual learning, the challenges we have in the county with you know, providing broadband, high speed internet access to rural community. I know I have a hotspot that gets like one or two bars, and we do all of our teleworking and virtual learning using that, so I understand the challenges. But I did ask during the webinar, I asked Commissioner Rosen Worsell about the E rate program. I know that's been a topic of discussion. I know Ms. Cupka's brought it up on the Board of Supervisors and Commissioner Rosen Worsell did, I asked about the, you know, potential for the the lines run to schools being used for residential purposes. And she did confirm that the program can only be used to pay for the connections to the schools, but that there's currently a petition to the agency to revisit this. I'm going to encourage anyone to reach out with additional questions. So I just thought that was very good information pertinent to where we are today with virtual learning and all that goes with it. So that's all I have.
Yeah, I'm not going to belabor any points either. It's been a long evening. I totally appreciate every email we got was very well thought out and very well written, and everybody's got valid points on both sides. I appreciate everyone that spoke this evening and those of you that stuck in or still here and suck it out. Emotions are running high all the way around. I don't think there's any easy answers. I think that there's no one fits all answer for any of this that's going on currently, and nobody's going to please everyone. And I think we're just doing the best we can to make decisions that will be the least disruptive and ensure the safety of all as best we can. I also personally want to thank all the support, encouragement, and kind words that I have received from friends, neighbors, and community members. Thanking me and the board for what we do and just for, just for being supportive and kind, and that's been really helpful during the last few weeks when things have been kind of, you know, crazy. So thank you all for everything.
Okay, yeah, I just would like to thank Dr. Benson and his staff, and I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I'm just a little anxious because I really think that we need to figure out a way to get the kids, some of the kids or the kids that want to be back in school, back in school, and trying to get that done sooner than later. I'm not trying to kick the can down the road and wait until January or whatever, but so I don't know that I got everything out the way that I wanted to. But anyways, we'll we'll get there. I do think that, you know, the staff is amazing. I mean, we are blessed in a small community that we have. You know, I I think that we all are, feel like a very family oriented network here. I think the staff does great. I know that the janitors, you know, they work hard. We've had some some issues with that, them getting getting COVID, and I I think that, you know, maybe a little bit more training and cleaning might be something that we could could look at, and that's one of the things I wanted to talk about in the work session and not trying to micromanage, but just maybe identify some things that we, you know, want to have a little bit more information or a little bit of clarity. I think we've heard a lot today from people that, you know, there's a little bit of confusion, whether it's with the teachers or with the parents, and there's just those certain specific things that I think we'd like to identify a little bit more, and and that's the kind of stuff that I want to talk about in the work session. Not trying to micromanage, but say, Dr. Benson, what does this exactly mean? So that either you tell us and everybody hears it, or it's put in a presentation, and then then we understand it. But I I do, you look really tired. But I do appreciate all of the staff and the bus drivers, you know, they are, some of the bus drivers are working and the cafeteria staff, you know, and the janitors, they're they're still working even though we're not here in school, and and we tend to forget about them every now and then, and I just want to put a shout out that we appreciate everything that they're doing as well, so.
Can I make one other comment?
No.
Just real quick, because it came up earlier. I want to, you know, and thanking everybody, absolutely, and all their hard work, but a comment was made by a parent earlier about kids not getting meals if they're not in school. Well, shout out to our cafeteria staff who provides two meals a day, five days a week for those who can get to the schools and pick them up. And I'm sure if they can't get there, they find other ways to get it to them, because
They do have some delivery.
So we're providing ten meals a day per student free for the county. So just to make that clear, that everybody knows that that's going on too.
And also, it's it's not just for the 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 families that are in need or feel that they're in need. I mean, it's 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 hard. It's anybody for, yeah, it's for anybody under the age of eighteen. So, you know, if it's, and it's so much easier, because when you're trying to juggle, you have a couple of kids and you're trying to juggle, you know, helping them, and you need to get lunch, it comes, you know, prepackaged. You put it in the microwave, breakfast and lunch, you put it in the microwave, you press a button, and it's done. It it just doesn't, you don't have to worry about
And a huge shout out to Ms. Davis, who has, who has worked tirelessly to get this done.
Pickup days are Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Yep.
Just saying.
Two to four, two to five, two to five?
Just wanted
Two to five, Tuesdays and Thursdays, two to five at whatever school your your students are in.
I mean, a motion to adjourn.
We got closed session.
I don't think we have a closed session.
No, we don't have a closed session.
Okay, cool.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second, second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, y'all can vote on that.